...a special meeting Foxfire Council to discuss Table six dash one part of the UDO. I'll let the record show that all members of the council are present as well as Mary Gilroy and others in the audience. So I guess the way we'll just start this, just start at the top. Everybody should have looked at this and had questions or comments to be ready to make. So we'll just start at the top and we have a comment already.
Yes, I just want to make sure, and this is I guess for you as well, Mary, to help with this. I want to make sure I understand the overall document in terms of what we should be looking at as it relates to all of these particular items currently in there. And, and what I'm asking is, is, is this document, should we look at this document like we're, we're building a village, our own village? And these, these items that are listed in here are items that we would want to see in our village or not want to see in our village?
Can I answer that?
Yes, yes.
When we, when we looked at this, we looked at the land use plan as the guide. Because the land use plan says that when we talk about allowable uses, we want to maintain open rural recreation and we want businesses that support the needs of the residents who live in the village, okay? With the concept of a village center eventually, which would be, um, let's get my VBD down this way down Richmond, down the corner here on Foxfire Road, those are our VBD districts. And so it was really, when we really got into it and we started going, okay, wait a minute, what do we really want it to be? We tried to keep uses that would support the land use plan. That was kind of, I mean, that's kind of the, even though that's a recommending document, that's kind of the foundation that you build your allowable uses on. At least that's the way planning and zoning looked at it. So with that in mind and based on the landowner meetings that we did when the Beaver Springs PUD came up, it got pretty easy to frame what the village should look like. Not easy, that's the wrong word. It got a little clearer about the things that we should allow. And remember when Hornick, Bob Hornick was here, like when you guys had just started as a council, he was very specific that things that are not in there are not allowable. And that was good news to us because the first time we did it was like, look, let's just say everything we think shouldn't be allowable. And when Hornick said if it's not in there, it's not allowable, I was like, okay, time to strip it.
So something like, so the reason I ask that is that something like a tattoo parlor, right? So a tattoo parlor is authorized in the village business district.
According to this document.
According to this document.
Right.
So it, it would be up to us then to, to look at that and say, that's really not something that would be-
Then take it out.
Yeah.
And then it would just be removed, correct?
Well, unless, you know, a lot of younger people want tattoos.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying. I'm using that as a, as a hypothetical.
Yes, and you know, let me give you another one too. It was, it was impossible for us to list every single conceivable potential retail business. I mean, there could be a tech business two years from now that wants to come in that the idea for today doesn't even exist. But there was no way that we found, and if you guys can do it, my hat's off, but we couldn't find something that would help us define future businesses like miscellaneous retail because you, you, whatever is in there needs to be specific, very specific.
Or, or not, right? So if we, so if we take a tattoo parlor out, and then to Don's example, if five years later some young people say, we want a tattoo parlor, are they allowed to have that put back in?
And we still say, oh, I'm kidding. But you could-
Right, but that's what I mean though.
Right, but what happens then, if it's not allowable use, then that use has to come to planning and zoning. Planning, zoning makes a recommendation and the council goes to public hearing to decide whether it becomes allowable.
Okay, and then on the other side of that, and this is the other part that I want to be clear, is if we put a, again, since we're using village business district, we'll, we'll stick with that. If we say that it's allowed, if I, if I read this authorized use, Table six dash one says it lists the allowed, allowed by right within each business, within each zoning district. In other words, if we leave, as an example, we leave tattoo parlor in there, and then the tattoo pie comes, so I'm gonna buy the, the end of the general store, put in a tattoo parlor. If we say by right-
They can do it.
They, they, they can do it, then they, they can do it. We can't stop it.
Correct.
Correct. But we can conditionally zone it. I mean, you can, you can put some parameters on, but yeah, I think what you say is true. If you leave it in there, it says that if someone wants to do a tattoo parlor-
In the zoning district.
That in, in the village business district, that it is an allowable use.
Right, and that's the thing that I want to make perfectly clear as I read through this, as I look through the, do, you know, do I really want to see a concrete processing plant in the village business district?
Where's that?
I, I'm making it up.
I was gonna, don't scare me like that. No, we took all that-
Well, there is, there is something, a concrete plant, there is a concrete thing in here, and I thought, you know-
But it's not in the village business district, I don't think.
Well, that's right. I'm just, I'm just, my point is, is that, is I went down through this and said, do I, do I want to see an auto parts store here? Do I want to see a gas station here? So, so as we look through this, if we're, if we don't want it, we just get rid of it.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
The purpose of today is to screen this and either agree or disagree with the recommendations from P and Z. You know, if you look at the first thing, somebody get their table.
No, I don't have my table.
Is this the table you're looking for?
No.
Oh, this. Okay, we only had it.
I don't know.
Okay, we need, you want me to get a copy of it for you because this will be tough to go through.
Is that, is that a complete one?
Yes.
All the way to the PUD?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think, too, what we've got to keep in mind, and this again was an article that was in the pilot, you know, six months ago or so, it says, it's what Southern Pine has experienced, is if a town's not careful, it faces a future it may not want.
Exactly.
And that's what I think we all have to be, I'd rather take things out and-
Absolutely.
Than keep them in.
Absolutely.
And any kind of future imagination is unacceptable.
Yeah, that's what I looked at when I wanted to do.
It's exactly the way we should be looking at it. Take it out if we don't-
Take it out.
If it's not specifically authorized.
I'm not getting my album.
Or do we want to start line by line?
Definitely, we just start line by line and work our way straight down after we get a couple more copies and some people don't have it.
Maybe you, maybe you know the answer to this while she's getting the copies. So to, to finish my thought on this, and again, what I'm looking at is this statement right at the top where it says allowable by right. I already talked about that one. So we clearly stated that if it's in there, they have the right to build it. But the second part of that says as well as, as well as, so in addition to, uses that may be authorized provided certain conditions are met and subject to approval of a special use permit. What does that mean?
I mean, they can, they can apply for a special use in any, in any area and it has to be gone through the process, through P and Z and then through to us. All it says is you could ask for special, you know.
It doesn't mean anything is approved, they have to apply.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, so it says, it lists the uses allowed by right as well as, but I, the only thing I see in here are those that are authorized by right as in A, I'm assuming that's what that means.
Yeah, correct, allowed.
So, so there is then no, that second part of that, there is nothing in this document that provides an area that would give that-
Oh, a card.
I'm just thinking, I'm thinking that maybe the PUDs would fall under that special, but we could always strike the second half of that. We don't have to have that statement in there.
No, we don't.
And I don't know if it's necessary or not.
Well, let's delete it.
Just take it out.
Hey, guys, help me out, where are you?
So we were, so Mary, I was finishing up the top statement here on top of the table here, and I talked about already the allowed by right, which you answered that question very well. The second part of that though talks about as well as, so there's in addition to those that are by right, there are those uses that may be authorized provided certain conditions are met, subject to approval of a special use permit. I didn't see any of those in this, any optional area that would provide for that in, in six one.
Ask me that again.
So in other words, if I look down here and I see an A in the column, right? I'm assuming that that means, and I think you already answered this though, it says that use, uses allowed by right. So in other words, if we see an A and we say it's okay, then by right, that they can have it, or they can be built. The second part talks about conditional areas that would be subject to approval for a special use permit, but I, I don't see anything that would-
Mary, it's probably about the statement at the very top of the table where it's the very top, right under the table title, it says list, the table six dot one lists the principal uses allowed by right within each zoning district. And we're saying stop the sentence there and delete as well as uses that may be authorized provided certain conditions.
That came from somewhere.
Yeah, so we should just, but we don't, we could delete that. We could just say this table is the table that, of authorized uses.
I guess what, the way I read that was that if we say tattoo parlors are not allowable and they want to do one, they can ask for a special permit.
No, no, they'd have to come through a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I still think, we'll just get rid of it then.
Yeah, let's just get rid of it.
If we have-
I'm sure that came right out of the original text.
If our attorney says we have to add it back in, we add it back in, but we should just get rid of it because maybe it muddies the waters.
It does for me, again, unless there was some descriptor in there that I missed, but I don't, I don't see it.
Well, we'd never know that until they ask.
Well, hang on a second. Anybody looked at the UDO and matched that, what you said up against?
Well, there's a lot of things that need to be changed in the UDO too because-
Well, no, no, but here's the thing, the UDO talks about special use permits though.
Okay, maybe we can table that.
I think let's move on to each of the categories. Let's not get hung up on, on the anchors. Okay, let's just start line by line, start with the top, look at single family.
No, I don't want any single family in here. Just a little levity in the morning.
Okay, anybody have any issues with, single family being allowed everywhere but the business district and multifamilies.
And recreational.
Real quick, remember that we updated the definition of a manufactured home out of one sixty D. It's much different than what we had. There was class B, class C, that's not, that's not in there anymore. And a modular home doesn't need to be called out separately, that is considered a single, just a single family home, okay?
Right, right.
Okay, so anybody have any issue with the first line? Single family detached.
No, but I'm gonna ask another stupid question, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
These are things that I noted as I went. So we have RS twenty, thirty, forty WS, the twenty, thirty, forty designation. I couldn't find anything, I mean, I went through and pulled out the definitions as it relates to RS, so low density, RS thirty, low density with watershed overlay. Would this, does, does the numbers have any significance whatsoever, twenty, thirty, and forty?
Yes.
Okay, could you tell me what twenty means?
Twenty means a minimum of twenty thousand square feet per lot.
Okay, is that in there somewhere?
Yeah, it's in the UDO.
It's in the UDO.
Yeah, you can have more than twenty thousand square feet, but in an RS twenty, you may not have less than twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, thank you.
Per lot? Yes, okay, and then the thirty is the same.
Thirty thousand, forty thousand.
Thank you, very much.
And all of our, all of our RS forty is watershed.
And remember that RA is also forty thousand.
Right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, that, that was good because I had the same question.
I should, if I look, I should have stopped.
Okay, be good on that.
Yep.
Uh, single family attached, that being townhomes, authorized, obviously multifamily and the PUD.
Yes.
Manufactured homes, we figured that's got to go back to RS twenty, thirty, and forty, correct?
No, no.
No, no, no.
RA.
RA and RA five.
You said we changed the definition?
We changed the definition because in the, in the original UDO, it talked about class B and class C manufactured homes. And there is no such thing now. So we took the definition, in fact, we even referenced it there, a single family manufactured home is a trailer and we don't allow it.
It's a trailer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's their definition?
Yeah.
It's a mall.
Yeah, and you know, that definition needs to be inserted in our definitions.
Oh, oh, in the definitions.
I didn't realize that they would consider trailer by and large.
Yeah, we pulled it right out of one sixty.
Okay.
And, and the red, I'm sorry, the red A versus the black A.
Are you on accessory building?
I'm just, in general, there are, there are As that are A that are in red and then those are in black, there's probably something similar.
Well, that's where we changed stuff and I thought I meant to change all the black and I didn't.
Mine's blank.
Mine's too, yeah. Okay, so we got manufactured homes, we're saying RA, RA five. Okay. Okay, not RE, we want anything in RE?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, duplexes, authorized and multifamilies and the PUDs. PUD's pretty much standard, okay. Accessory dwellings authorized everywhere but the-
Go ahead. I just realized we made a mistake.
What's that?
Accessory dwelling, I think when we read that, we read it to be accessory building.
Yeah, that should be-
I don't know that you would want an accessory dwelling in BV.
Well, I think it's supposed to be an accessory building.
Well, I don't know that that could be, that wouldn't be in this class-
Wouldn't be in a single family home.
Yeah, it wouldn't be in this classification. So, yeah, so that should be probably-
Building?
No, just, that's what it is.
Accessory, accessory dwellings only exist right now.
It wouldn't be in the business, wouldn't be in twenty, thirty, or forty probably?
No, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. We have a provision, do we not, that allows an accessory dwelling based on acreage?
Yeah, yeah, based on acreage, but twenty, thirty, and forty probably-
It's conditional though.
Well, if it's conditional, that's okay, but let me just be sure we got that right.
Why are you allowing it in the RA, RS twenty, thirty, and forty?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's well smart acreage.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's more accessory.
Well, no, no, not necessarily, because we have RS twenty parcels that are twenty acres.
Oh, we do?
You can't, when you look, when you look at the square footage of a lot, remember, it's, that's the minimum size, but we have people that have RS forty lots that are three and four acres.
Oh, okay.
So the, the-
Now, just, if you look at the current table, it was authorized. That was not something that we really changed.
The, the, the term dwelling is indicating that somebody's gonna live there.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that definition of dwelling means that it's gonna have people living there.
Or animals.
No, it's people.
No.
It's not, dwelling is for people.
It should be buildings. Though I would say-
Because accessory buildings, see accessory dwellings are defined in the UDO under each zoning district. So I'm thinking, Mary, that this should be accessory buildings.
I don't think it should be in this.
Or maybe it should cross it off completely.
But it doesn't, yeah, hang on a second.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be in here.
Well, let's cross it off.
I would agree.
Because it's already defined in our, each zoning district has what, what accessory buildings you can have, and one of the accessory buildings is an accessory dwelling.
Oh, no. If we take it off.
It's already stated in our, like I said, it's already stated in our zoning districts what the, what the allowable accessory buildings are. And again, a dwelling is, is a type of accessory building. Correct, Mary?
Yeah, I'm looking at what's in the UDO to be sure we get it right.
So starting twenty one eight one starts referencing accessory buildings. Twenty one dash eight dash one defines it. And it is what, it is, it is this, this is the area that I think everybody was thinking that, that this applies to accessory building are the little places where we store lawnmowers and things like that.
That's a shed to me.
So, yeah, well-
Well, I think there's a difference between accessory dwelling and accessory building.
I agree, that's why we're saying get rid of dwelling and just keep what we have already.
And by the way, accessory dwelling is not in our definitions at the back of the UDO.
No, but it does address it, the use of dwellings, twenty one eight thirteen talks about the use of dwelling units in short-term rental dwellings.
Yeah, right, and it also talks about an additional like mother-in-law suite, square footage, but it's attached. It's within the home, it's not detached.
Well, it says dwelling units may be occupied or held ready for occupancy for residential purposes only. Accessory or other uses of dwellings may be permissible. So if we, why don't we just get, take it out?
No, because accessory dwellings are allowed in-
It's based on, it's based on our, our UDO.
Right, and they are, and they are allowed. They are allowed in RE, EU.
Well, again, are we gonna, are we talking about accessory dwellings or are we talking about accessory buildings?
We need to stay focused on dwelling.
Because again, we clearly said in each, we went through that, planning and zoning went through that and said exactly how much acreage you needed to have a dwelling, which is different from, you know, buildings.
Absolutely, totally.
The only references when I go into our UDO, the only I've got of it is twenty one eight thirteen, which talks about use of dwelling units and short-term rentals.
I think when, when planning and zoning dealt with this, don't ask me how this happened, but I think we saw accessory dwelling and read accessory building. That's the only reason I ever would have put one in BV, is because right now village businesses can't have an accessory building, which is kind of dense.
Well, we need to change that to accessory building. That's all.
Well, the message come out of this.
Wait a minute, I think it still needs to be accessory dwelling because you can have an accessory dwelling in EU.
Well, you can have a lot of things, you can have a greenhouse, you can have, you know.
But that's building as opposed to dwelling.
No, I know, but do we have every single accessory item listed in this table? As far as pool houses and-
Those, no, because those are defined separately.
Right, which is, which is the same as what we're talking about here. Accessory buildings are defined separately as well as, as well as accessory dwellings.
Yes.
They're defined as usage per lot size and per zoning.
Well, in EU, RE and RA, detached guest quarters not to exceed fifty percent of the square footage of the primary residences are allowed. And I would probably say we should add RF in there, RF two hundred.
Yeah, well, do we have that in there now?
No.
Yeah.
We do?
We don't have it and, as it stands right now, based on this, dwellings, we have it everywhere except multifamily and although the WSO, I think we could get rid of that column, didn't we decide we're gonna get rid of that since everything's-
Yeah, might want to run it by morning, but I would because it's an old way of saying. I would take accessory dwelling and only allow it in RE, EU, RF two hundred, and how did we define it in RA? In an RA.
Okay, so, so it comes, it comes out, wait, say that, it comes out the-
It would come out-
Of village business.
It would come out of business, it would come out of RS twenty, thirty, forty. It would stay in RA, RA five, RE, and I would, and, and we have it in RF two hundred in EU.
But I thought we allowed it in certain RS if you had enough land. I thought it was allowed.
Yeah, you know, I can't find that though.
I can't find that either. I, you, you mentioned that, but I, I-
What I can find is that you have a, a portion of square footage that can be dedicated to a quote mother-in-law suite in your home, so you can have like a separate little apartment.
Right.
But I don't see where it says it can be detached. And I agree with you, I swear it used to be in there.
Okay, so where we stand now is RA, RA five, RE, RF two hundred, EU, and PUD.
PUD, yes, I would agree.
Let me ask a question.
What?
How would, how would we have them in a PUD? I mean, it was our recommendation, but I'm wondering.
Oh, you could, I mean-
Well, what if you had a PUD that was an equestrian estate?
Yeah, okay, that's fine with that, yeah.
I mean, for, for one example.
Yeah, one other thing I'll say really quickly is that proposal, the conditional zoning should be applied to every district. Once we really got in that and started reading, conditional zoning should be applied to every district. And you don't have that in here.
Okay. We ready to move to the next step?
Yes.
Multifamilies, uh, and the RM, and the PUDs. Any issues there?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, condos, same thing. And we get down to retirement housing services.
I don't think that should be allowed in the village business district.
No.
Personally, that's, I think it's, that's no different than a retirement center.
Yeah.
You know, I think we should remove retirement housing and put it in a PUD personally. Same thing with con, get assisted living. I don't think those are what we want in our village business district.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good.
That's good.
Okay.
For both.
Leave it on the PUDs. Okay. Continuing care, PUDs.
Is somebody taking notes on, on these things just before we get too far?
Well, I am.
Do we have a master document that somebody's maintaining so that we can turn that in?
I'll use this as a master.
Before we get too far down the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and B and B. Anybody have any issues with that?
Yeah, yeah, in Ali's residential.
Okay, but it's allowed, it's allowed in short-term rentals.
Yeah.
It's allowed.
It's allowed.
And right now, I don't, I don't know how Pinehurst did it, we're limited, you can't, you can't rent a short-term rental in the residential districts more than six months out of the year, but it is allowed.
That's what our, yeah.
And we cannot make it, I don't think we'd make it not allowed, we went through that with change.
So it could be like monthly? Is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is that anything less than ninety days is considered a short-term rental.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah. Once you get above ninety days, it's a long-term rental and that's a totally different, that's totally different.
So is that what's being considered under this line is six months?
Six months, but you can't, but, but you couldn't write, I'm not, I'm not a rental guru, but, but once you get above ninety days, it's a totally different contract.
But that's ninety days with one person.
Uh huh.
It's not ninety days of, of conducting business. It's ninety days with the same person.
I understand that.
This is a B and B, it's like you go somewhere and you stay in somebody's house for-
A week.
A week.
A week, that's what I'm saying, it's not, it's not six months.
And a bed and breakfast, actually. It's six months total of rental.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that first. It's six months total of rental to different occupants is what it would be.
And we say we can do that, although I have a question, whether we want that to be in the, okay, we don't, all right.
See, I'm thinking RS, I'm thinking RS twenty, it's just not appropriate to have, to have that type of an establishment in such a congested area, even RS thirty, I, I just think that-
You guys, I don't think you're gonna be able to pull that off.
I don't think so either.
I don't.
I, I just-
I miss what, I just-
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I would like to add that according to the U D O, if they wanna bed and breakfast, they have to apply for a special use permit. Uh, by the village council, so if somebody wants to turn their home into a B and B, as I read this. Uh, they're have to gonna, they're gonna have to request approval through a special use permit to the village council.
And remember, B and B, you are still the resident of the home. You're not renting out the whole house.
Right, you've, I mean, a bed and breakfast is, is someone, right.
It's your residence.
Well, let me ask a question though. Remember, I told you, we worked on this a long time, so if I flip one today, um, if you think about a bed and breakfast home, most bed and breakfast homes. Are not just one renter at a time.
Right.
And I'm not sure that we want that in the R S districts, because what you're talking about is basically. When planning and zoning first looked at this, we were also dealing with short-term rentals, and I think what we were thinking was, hey, I can't prohibit someone. From using their home as a short-term rental, okay? But bed and breakfast home really is more, it should be allowed, I would think.
Almost same as a hotel in a, in a certain.
Well, it's a little different, but, but, I mean, if I have, let's say, perfect example, the big golf course house where we had the bad party. That thing is six bedrooms, it is set up, I mean, for, someone could literally take that. And basically make it a bed and breakfast that has six different occupants in there at the same time. I don't know that that's what we want.
Right, that's what I just, that's what I just said, yeah.
Right.
So where, so, what's everybody's thought, where do we, do we wanna allow it anywhere? On the R A, R E, E U.
We already have short-term rentals.
That's different.
Yeah, that's correct, I get, that's my point. My point is, is that, and I think, you know, we need to be clear that we're not, we're not getting rid of short-term rentals. We're only, this discussion is strictly bed and breakfast.
Bed and.
I think if anything, you know, maybe in, um, R E or R F two hundred, somewhere, somewhere where there's larger, there's larger properties.
The big, there's lots, I mean, yeah, yeah, you have larger properties.
They're gonna be less intrusive to neighbors.
Right.
And, and community.
So, so we're going to say bed and breakfast will be allowed in R A. R A five. R E. R F two hundred.
And E U.
And E U.
Yep.
And scratch the rest.
Would you allow, would you, would you allow it in village business district, cause it operates as a business?
And PUD, obviously.
No.
Okay.
I would say no.
Especially with the business district that we have defined as today, you know, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's not in PUD right now, did you?
Yes, no, it isn't.
So we would take out the R S twenty?
It is, yeah. Not on mine.
Not on mine.
It's on mine.
And.
R M.
Are we, you know, working off a different?
And PUD.
I'm working off the one that I sent to you as the recommendation.
That's what I have, that's what I have.
That's right, no, how could that be different?
I don't know.
Didn't you just, didn't you just hand you one?
All right, well, I'll cross it off, I'll cross it off mine if you don't want it in a PUD, but I don't know why we wouldn't want it in a PUD.
Leave the PUD, leave it in the PUD, but we wanna take it.
Yeah, I would leave it in a PUD, because let's say you have somebody come, who comes in, they wanna do a little of this and a little of that, and bed and breakfast home is one of the, they wanna have a couple of those for something.
Right, so we're gonna take it out of twenty, thirty and forty.
Right, and multi.
And, yeah.
Multifamily, okay.
All right.
Hotel, do we want a hotel, could be, you know, it could be one of those boutique hotels.
Yeah.
Okay, be good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, now we come to the fun part. Retail sales, service and or repair. Um, auto sales, do we want auto sales?
No.
Nope.
I don't think so.
Nope, all right.
Nor motorcycle.
Motorcycle sales.
We gotta have motorcycle sales.
No.
Um, bicycle sales.
Yeah.
I think that would be appropriate.
All right, automotive parts store, need a NAPA?
No.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, what if you had a guy who came in and he was gonna put a gas station, and he wanted to put a small, a small. Auto parts thing as part of his gas station, you really?
Well, that would be part of the gas station, I would think.
Yeah.
It'd be part of his normal business to have parts.
I think you can.
Wouldn't be standalone.
I think you can comply with that, apply for that along with this gas station.
Yeah, I would think that.
If he gets approval.
Auto supplies, are you talking NAPA or?
Yeah.
It says with or without convenience store or supermarkets, so convenience store, you go into those and they sell a lot of things.
Right.
We gotta, okay. So we are, we're going to, but gas stations, we will allow.
Yeah, I guess.
Business district, okay. Automotive repair.
I don't, the only thing with automotive repair that bothers me is. Thank you, is that it can get, unless we have very specific rules about how businesses are kept. It can look bad.
Yep, I agree, so I would say let's dot, and then if they wanna build, then let them go through the.
Right, and then you have a little more control over, you know, what it looks like.
So we're saying, so we're saying no?
Yeah.
I would say no.
Okay, charging stations, if they allow gas.
That's probably coming.
I would say that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I agree, okay. Consumer sales, furniture store.
I guess.
I guess it'll be all right.
Lawn supplies.
Hardware, well, you forgot hardware, I have hardware, I don't have that. Hardware Home Center.
Okay, electronics, okay.
Do you have that?
Have what?
Hardware Home Center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hardware Home Center.
Lawn and garden supplies.
Yeah, yeah, do we wanna let that, do we wanna have a?
If somebody came in with a small true value, would they object to that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Right, that's, right.
Same with lawn and garden then.
Yeah, very good.
Electronics.
I guess.
Yeah, yeah, why not?
Heating and plumbing equipment.
Well, hold on. Uh, it says electronics and appliances, so, so I mean, let's go to the extreme since we're, we're building our village here, right? Do we want an appliance? Do we want an appliance store in our village business district?
Yeah.
Okay.
All I want in the, the, I know, is a coffee shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe an antique shop.
Right, yeah, I, yeah, I don't want, to be honest with you.
A diner, I, I don't want like a Sears here.
Right, but you're not gonna get that here.
Yeah, but you, no, we can't say that, you can't, I don't, I don't wanna take that attitude.
But don't, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, because this includes repair shops, cell phone stores, stuff like that, I mean. I don't know, I don't see that as detrimental to the village, if you wanna rewrite it, but I don't know that I'd throw the whole thing out.
Well, I, you're right, I, if it was up to me, I would take out the hardware home center and leave the lawn and garden supplies.
Well, wait a minute, I mean, if you have a small, a hardware home center, a small true value encompasses all those things. And those are great values, I wouldn't throw those out, I will, I would not throw that out.
Well, maybe we can clarify it to your point, uh, could we say something like to?
Small appliances?
Yeah, or, uh, as, um, how would we put this? Like an ace hardware or something.
No, you can't put that in there.
Okay, well, I, I'm not.
We, I mean, you can't, I mean.
But we're new at this.
No, that's okay.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, could we write something in there that would help us define what it is we're looking for? We're not looking for a Home Depot, we're looking for a true value ace.
Home Depot's not looking for us either.
Yeah.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna see one of those, we could see.
A small hardware.
A small hardware.
Yeah.
Small.
Hardware.
I mean, the thing, I think.
They like the ace, like an ace or.
What we're really focused on is independently owned businesses.
Correct.
Now, whether we can write that in, independently owned, so that we don't say we won't allow chains.
No. No, I don't think you can do that.
Couldn't we put small?
There are, I think there are communities, yeah.
Define it in here, I guess.
There are communities that say they won't allow train, uh, chain, um, or franchise businesses. I mean, there are, I mean.
So that would, that would rule out.
Well, that.
Ace would rule out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
True value.
What's independently owned?
But they're all part of the, the franchise.
Well, they could be an ace hardware and be a franchise, so it's independent, it's still a franchise, yeah.
But it's still a franchise, right.
It's still franchise, so I don't know, I don't know whether we're gonna get into.
But, I think it's. I think it's the independently owned, but anyway.
Well, I guess my point is, if we leave it in, we leave it in and we can get anything. So, what you might imagine, it may not be what they wanna build here. The fact that they're, we give them the right to put hardware.
Well, hold on, hold on, you can also, when they come in to do it, tell them it's gonna be conditionally zoned.
Exactly.
And then we absolutely lay out every, then the, the person who owns the property and the council agree in writing on all the conditions.
Sounds great, except that our table says that they are allowed by right to build in there. Now, I really, you're saying, why can't we add a caveat to say that, the hardware store is an example, would be something that would not be allowed by right. But would be allowed based on conditional, uh, agreements.
That's totally up to you guys. I just, when we looked at this, we don't have a big village business district. You are not going to attract a Home Depot, a Lowe's, a Best Buy, no one in their right mind, even when this area is completely built out. Our village business district doesn't support that kind of.
But it says they can build it.
Right.
So they can build it.
Well, you know what, I think.
That doesn't necessarily say that.
The thing, the thing is, is that.
They have the right to build it.
And, and Gary, what, what Gary is saying, and I agree, is, is that if we don't.
Yes.
If we don't think it's ever gonna happen, then it shouldn't be on the list, and if we don't want it to happen, it shouldn't be on the list, so let's take it off.
If we don't want it, we take it off.
Which one are you struggling with, electronics and appliances?
Maybe the home hardware, the lawn, lawn and garden, maybe all of that, um, it's, it's not maybe what we want.
I think it is what we want.
Well, we know what we want, we close our eyes and see a real nice ace hardware store with a little wall, but that's not what this says. This says anybody, anybody can do it.
I don't know how you can be narrowed down to that.
Exactly, that's my point, we can't.
But if you look at the definition, something like a lawn and garden supply, that serves the needs of the village.
It does.
If somebody came in and put in a small, let me give you an example. You know, the guy on two eleven that just shut down, that had all the apes and the big sex, okay? I mean, if we had had something like that in the village, I would classify that as lawn and garden supplies.
Right.
And I don't think anyone would object to having somebody like that, I mean, he was kind of a quaint, you know, quaint little deal.
Well, then let's get rid of home center and just put hardware. Cause you, you should, you should, you should put in har- uh, home center, I mean, in Google you get the, what you would think, right?
Okay, so it's hardware and lawn and garden supplies, and get rid of home center.
All right.
If somebody is gonna come into the village and build a home center, hardware store, he's not gonna build it in the village anyway, it'll be out on Hoffman Road. East or north or south, it won't be in the village, there's no room.
So they're not getting rid of it, they're just putting it out. They're just putting it in.
Take it off.
That's what we're saying, that's what you're saying, you know, Lowe's is not gonna build out here.
Well, you hope that they won't, but.
Yeah, I mean, they just, they've got enough people.
Well, we give them the right to do it if we leave it in.
But I just don't think we can.
So do you wanna combine it and have it say hardware, lawn and garden?
Yeah, I think that's what we should do.
Yes, all right, hardware, lawn and garden, all right.
Okay, so hardware home center.
No, just hardware.
No, 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 what I'm gonna say is hardware home center, that line's gonna go away, we're gonna add hardware to the next line. And have it read something like repair supplies, lighting supplies, nursery and garden products. Is that what you want?
Yeah, that, what we want, that we're saying?
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, okay.
So we're allowing, that'll be one thing, so we'll, we'll have that as one. Now, electronics, can we clear, we?
I don't think so, no, I don't think so.
No.
All right, nobody wants to do that?
No.
Plumbing and heat, I don't think so.
I don't think so either, cause the hardware, hardware's gonna have that.
Okay.
Computers off, we're edible.
That's out.
Please don't do that.
Heating and plumbing equipment?
Out, out.
Out.
Yeah, I would say. Uh, computers and software.
Out.
Out.
And cameras and photographic supplies.
What kind of, what, what kind of re. If somebody has a computer problem, and we all have computers now, where do they go? Somebody puts up a little computer repair shop.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
I don't either.
I really don't. If you take, let me, let me give you an example, there's a guy in Southern Pine called, Southern Pines called Ink Pros. He fills cartridges, he repairs cell phones, he repairs laptops. That is something that benefits the residents of the village. And let me tell you, I mean, if you're older and you don't wanna have to fight your way to Southern Pines, or you don't wanna have to deal with Best Buy, if we had somebody like that in the village, I think that'd be great.
Yep.
All right, well then.
I, I don't, I disagree, and I, the only reason I disagree is because when, again, we're building our village, right? So when you close your eyes and you think about this little, this small pop-run place, think of, what, what does your imagination come up with? A small hole-in-the-wall little place that, that is constantly turning over with, with new resident, this is not a law, this is not a business that's gonna thrive. For very, I do not believe, I agree, it would be nice to come down the corner and.
I think, I think, I think the business will thrive.
I think it will thrive.
Because they will adapt to new technologies, and they will adapt fast to the new technologies to us users out here.
And very frequently, those types of people also do home, they'll go into your home and repair your computer. I know people who have been very successful doing that.
Yeah, all right, okay, so we're gonna keep that.
So let's leave that in.
I don't know about camera and photo.
Are we talking about, did you, we took out electric and appliances, we took out hunting.
Heating and plumbing.
Okay, okay, so computer and software we took out?
No, we're leaving, leaving.
Okay.
Camera and photographic.
Oh.
I think that's a dinosaur myself.
Yeah, I do too, I think you're exactly right.
Oh, you should have, you should have.
The computer guy.
Computer and software and dinosaur.
You don't know what the next thing's gonna be, okay, next thing down.
Yeah, I think that, um, clothing, jewelry, leather shoes, I think that should be.
Cause that could be a little boutique.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we got one for the B B D, all right, good.
Yeah.
Forty goods.
Forty goods.
That's an odd category, I, I mean, I don't.
A little, a little music store, a hobby shop, I don't know, that sounds pretty appropriate for a small village.
So that's gonna be in your heart.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think you're gonna have.
Okay, bookstore.
I don't even know if they exist anymore. It would be nice if there was a new bookstore.
Well, okay, hold on.
I wouldn't mind one.
Yeah, there are some boutique bookstores that definitely still exist.
Or even used books.
I was gonna say, a used bookstore, there, we have several of those.
You can do that.
And those are small, little, almost a hobby business for somebody.
I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Don't say no to florists, or I'm gonna think you don't ever buy flowers.
Florist is fine.
Florist is fine, yeah, that's, uh, art dealers.
Sure.
Okay, frame shop, why not, yeah. Um, okay, tobacco.
That's a hookah store, and then you guys do whatever you want with that, we just didn't feel like.
I don't think it's gonna be here.
Take it out, take it out.
So take this out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't like mail order and direct selling status.
Me neither.
No, it's not in there.
Oh, it's off, I see, that needs to be deleted. It's still.
I know that, well, it shouldn't be off, they just got, it just got.
Can you just take your line out?
Antique shop, flea market.
I'll, I'll do the antique shop, but I don't know about the flea market or thrift store.
Yeah, I would not, I would not include thrift shops.
Well, you know what I'm gonna disagree.
Consignment shop, maybe.
Okay, but I would not take, I mean, there are thrift shops sometimes, I mean, they sell goods, they, I mean, we have people around here, not maybe in Foxfire, but, I mean, this is not really the high-end area like that Pinehurst is maybe. Those places, I mean, they serve a purpose.
I think we should, we should label it consignment more than thrift. I think consignment is a better.
Okay, so get rid of flea market.
And thrift store, just make consignment shop.
Right, and make it antique shop, consignment.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
So more of a La Courteur place on U S five.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, grocery store.
Supermarket.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, sure.
We need a supermarket, wouldn't it be great to have a big Harris Teeter back there?
Okay, convenience store.
You need to get back with your boy, I mean, sure is.
Convenience store, I think is fine.
Yep.
Yeah, we already have one.
Yeah, specialty food.
Sure, yes, yeah.
Fruit and vegetable store.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, beer and wine liquor.
Yeah.
Everybody have it.
Yeah, that would be a ABC for the liquor.
Yep.
Do we want an ABC store here?
Well, speaking of personal, I should go to the ABC store.
Why don't you just do- Well, man, if you're gonna have an ABC store, then you oughta allow it to have two parlors, cause now you're throwing along.
That's what I'm saying.
I think we'll do, just do beer and wine then.
Beer and wine are sold in the general store?
Yes, yes.
But there are stores that, that are.
And we do, okay, and you have a wine store, I mean, you have several wines, you have one or seven lakes, you go, okay. I think we're just deleting liquor store?
Yeah, I think so. Cause that has to be ABC.
Yeah. If you think about it, there's no, I don't recall any ABC stores in this area.
I know, wouldn't it be great? Right next to the Harris Teeter.
There's one on five, okay?
Well, I know, but, so I'm just thinking, if they're trying to look up this area.
They're looking at seven lakes, long.
They'll just send the drive like five miles to go to the liquor store, they could do it.
Deliver, maybe.
We're at Foxfire, a destination.
Take it from where one of those drinks, so, yeah.
Alright, so we're gonna take out liquor store, right?
That's government.
Beer and wine, which we're all, okay.
Food, food drinks.
Pharmacy, drugstore.
Sure.
Pet supply.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um.
Yes, small.
That could be a boutique type.
There, there are some small, the Care Four Canine in Southern Pines, if you, it's perfect. I mean, that is a small boutique store, and if you had one of those here, it probably would flourish.
Yeah.
We should be making a thrift shop.
Next time, no blue, please, sorry.
Cosmetic supplies and personal grooming products.
I don't think, if we have a grocery store, I don't know if we, if we, you know, a separate store for, you know, cosmetic and beauty supplies.
I almost need more help than I just know.
Yeah, I think, is that in or out?
Out.
Okay.
No?
I don't care.
Okay.
Go to the drugstore.
Optical.
Sure. Optician, sure. I think that, you know, doctor's offices.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, anything medical.
Uh, market or farm product.
Produce.
Farm, farm. How is that different from a fruit or vegetable store?
Right.
Should be the same.
Yeah, I'm thinking, uh, craft.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, not necessarily. If you say a market or farm produce, you'd think a little more like a farmer's market. And actually, I mean, if, if somebody brought in a small farmer's market here, I don't think people would go, oh, that's bad. I think mostly would agree that that was okay. When I look at that, I think that's more of a farmer's market.
Well, why don't we, why don't we call it farmer's market?
Yep, okay.
Is that on the list anywhere?
No, no.
I think the interpretation of that's wrong.
Any else make a suggestion? Can we date these?
You wanna change that?
So we know when we change them.
To say farmer's market.
Did it.
I did.
Market?
Which says market or farm produce or craft?
Mark, market, what do we do, farm, farmer's market?
Farmer's market or craft?
Yeah.
Or I like that.
I hope that's why I'm here.
Come on, I'll do it.
Okay, on to, uh, financial or banking services.
Bank would be nice.
Yep, I think a bank would be great.
Yeah.
Credit union.
Especially with your, your.
I'm not happy about credit union.
Well, this is, yeah, let's talk about, so we have a cred, uh, why would you want a credit union?
Well, we have a bank.
Well, it's always the same, money, credit union.
Either or.
That's all. Guy's like, I wanna build a credit union.
Oh, oh, right, okay, nevermind.
Yeah, either or.
Well, you know what, I think that next category we should delete, cause it's kind of redundant.
Which one?
The credit and finance.
I'm sorry?
I agree.
Credit and finance.
Your first and second one is buying it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just get rid of the credit and finance.
That whole thing comes out.
Yeah, investment banking, securities, brokerage.
That's kind of the same as banks.
No, that's not, not necessarily, that's not necessarily, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Brokerage office up there in the.
I would say leave that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Insurance, sure.
Yes, I would say.
Maybe same thing.
The next one.
Food, fun, travel.
Wait, wait, fun.
Financial establishment.
Trust or financial.
You got, what is that?
I would, if I, I'd combine that with investment.
I would just get that out of there.
Take it out.
Move that in with investments?
Yeah, take it out.
Pawn shop.
I don't, I'd rather not have a pawn shop.
I would say no. Collection agency?
No, no, no.
Okay, two my papers.
We don't want any of those people.
Okay, real estate.
Be after me.
Real estate, real estate services.
Sure.
Property management. I think all of these.
Real estate services.
Maybe down here at the bottom where they're talking about cars.
Uh, go up before that.
I've got rent there.
I'm sorry, the rental and leasing.
Yeah.
I, I, that to me, I, I wrote in here, rent a center, are we talking about putting in a rent a center?
Rent a better?
Is that what that is, rental and leasing?
Yeah, can I do?
So I would, I don't like those places. I think they're predatory.
Can we start at the, just let's go down the list.
Oh, I thought we did.
Okay, real estate.
Real estate services.
Real estate services.
Hold on, did you guys, hold on, did you not do food services?
No, we didn't.
I don't.
Where is food service?
See, this is why we need these dated, so we all have the right copy.
Food service?
Use category, register, uh.
I don't have a.
Where did that show up?
I don't have a food service.
I do.
I don't have that one.
Alright, hold on.
I got the one you sent me.
That's the one I, yeah, that's the one I.
I'm working off the one that Don sent, I'm working off the one that Mary sent to Don.
Yeah.
I'm working off the summer Lisa gave me.
Hold on.
I don't even see that.
Thank you.
Joe, you wanna copy a bit?
She's got a laptop, oh, you guys, you got a laptop.
What do you need?
Well, I'm gonna shoot it to you.
Real estate.
This is financial.
I, I go directly to.
Financial bank or banking services.
I don't see food services.
Do you want me to make you copy of this?
Well, which one's deleted?
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
You sure you got the latest?
Yeah, I think so.
Cause that's a different way to.
Retail says.
Well, that's why they need to be dated.
You don't have it, you're missing this section right here.
Jan's gonna make it, oh.
It's right after.
Oh, and I need four?
Financial banking services.
Four plus U.
And then it's be four, real estate and rental.
No, it's not on my list.
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have that at all.
Full service restaurant is the first item on there.
Uh, for one, yeah, I don't have it.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Well, wait, wait, wait.
That's the way to get that back. Uh, does everybody have real estate?
Yeah, that's my list.
Well, wait till Janet comes back.
When she come, why don't she come back, we can do the food, let's keep moving.
Well, no, she won't be here for the, for the discussion.
Yeah. Real estate services, I mean, this stuff looks pretty, with the exception of. Run a salad.
We would've taken more stuff out, like some of the, the stuff we knocked out, but I thought if we just send them something like that has three pages, I was concerned that then you'd go through looking for uses that we had taken out.
I appreciate this.
So the stuff that we're deleting, planning and zoning would have no problem.
Yeah, I, I know, I appreciate what you did. This, this, I mean, I saw the original document, this is, oh my gosh.
You have to understand, when we did that original document, we were gonna be done to get you a document.
You okay?
Yeah.
You have it.
I got it.
It's odd.
I don't, I don't know why I don't have.
No, you've got it.
Because she didn't.
You're special.
Do you have one?
Alright, so we're here on food service.
I, I think we shouldn't have, cause we already have a restaurant in our business district, don't we?
The general store.
Uh, do we don't?
No, we don't.
We don't.
I thought we did.
That's not a full service restaurant.
Not a sit down, you know, eating store, no.
I, okay, so no, we do want a full service restaurant.
Yeah, yeah, again.
So full service restaurant, yes, and we want that, uh, recreational district and the business district.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cafeteria?
I think we should say diner more than cafeteria.
Say what?
Diner more than cafeteria. Cafeteria is kind of a word, a weird restaurant.
Isn't a diner a full service restaurant? I mean, the lady.
Yeah, it is, it is.
So what's a cafeteria?
I don't, it's similar, a limited service restaurant.
A cafeteria would be like of a fake place.
I don't think we want that. I think we want a full service restaurant and leave it at that, right, at least as far as this list is.
Wait a minute, if you had somebody who did a mom and pop shop and they came up to the counter and ordered, I mean, if you look at this, and then they took their food and they went and sat at a table, that's a limited service restaurant, and I would not take that out. Because basically, basically, that's what the general store is.
Well, let's take cafeteria.
Yeah, take cafeteria out, and you say limited service restaurant. Okay.
Drive through restaurant.
Drive throughs.
Eh, no.
Hold on, hold on.
Store box, and you get.
Eh, wait a minute, what if you have a small place, right, and it's this place, it's a limited service restaurant, and they have a drive through window? I mean, what would COVID did to drive through, come on, I don't think, you don't need to wish for it, but I don't think we can take that out. Because people drive through, what if you had a drive through coffee shop, like the Little Pony Express place that was down in Southern Pines? I mean, you can't, I wouldn't take that out.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Well, what if we said, if we added drive through in the restaurant and in the limited service restaurant?
Right.
And take this drive through category out?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so what, what you could say then is customers serve themselves or are served from a counter and paid before eating also includes drive through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, delete catering, do that.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, let me get caught up here.
I mean, even a full service restaurant, they could have a drive through if they wanted to.
Sure, yeah.
While she's doing that, seems like this, the snack thing, you know, I'm looking at what this is in terms of use of type, that, why couldn't that just be part of the restaurant? The category, why do we have to have it separate?
Or, or limited service restaurant.
Or limited service, yes.
But to me, that's more like a coffee shop.
What's that?
Well, we should, we should specifically, we should say coffee shop.
Um, how about?
Well, that's a limited service restaurant.
Instead of snack or, or non-alcoholic bar, I would say coffee shop.
Coffee, coffee or snack shop?
Would that be a limited service restaurant?
Yeah.
Not necessarily, it's a, I don't know.
Okay, it's like a Starbucks.
That's fun.
Okay.
It's, it, in, in this area, it would be a small, small boutique, like, okay, Pine Stones.
The roast office, roast office.
Roast office, okay, those are small boutique, people come in, in fact, if we had something that was like used bookstore, a co, the roast office is a very popular, very popular place. Okay, so we're gonna.
It's kinda like a limited service restaurant?
We're gonna change, really, no.
Okay.
But it's not just food, it's other things.
Okay, so we're gonna change snack or non-alic, non-alcoholic bar to read coffee or snack shop.
Coffee and snack, what?
Coffee, coffee or snack shop.
Coffee and snack, yeah.
Alright. We good on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we want a bar?
No.
Yeah.
Full service restaurant.
No.
You take my ABC liquor store out, you're taking my liquor, not.
Yeah, you'll just have to suffer. You'll have to have a meal with your drink.
Okay, what's that? Okay, so I, I'm doing all kinds of things tonight.
I'm not sure.
It senses.
I don't know, does someone want a bar?
No.
No.
Well, let me ask you a question.
I think you're gonna have, if somebody puts in a full service restaurant.
Oh, no, but that would, this is a separate bar.
That's separate in a bar.
Yeah, that, well, that's, should be.
Should we put full service restaurant with bar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And make sure that it's not.
We don't want a beer, we don't want a beer joint.
With, yeah, or liquor allowed or bar allowed, yeah. It's not like the Midwest down there.
May or may not include bar.
I say bar allowed.
In a full service.
Yeah, they have to get their liquor license anyway, apply for it, so. So we're taking out bar or drinking place?
Yes.
Okay, good.
We are?
Well, you, yeah, we're gonna take your suggestion.
Do we wanna vote on that one? And put it in, in, in full service restaurant?
No, and having it separate, do we want, does, is everyone cool with the takeout?
Yeah, yeah, I like your idea, just putting it up on the restaurant.
I got it up on full service.
Okay.
It's gonna say, full service will say, we'll leave food served while seated onsite or in combination with takeout may include bar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, food trucks.
No, that's, this is, this is, no. Well, if it is a food truck, we should say food truck, because.
But it does, kinda.
But I think food trucks.
It says motorized vehicles.
It says motorized vehicles on it.
Consumption from motorized vehicle.
Okay, but there's, there's a lot of hoops that they have to go through in order to have the food truck. And we found that out with the, uh, but we already allow food trucks in the village.
As a part.
As a, in the, in a permitted.
Right.
I mean, at any. But it's not a permit, per, permanent thing.
Correct.
Right. I don't know if we want.
Why would you not let the golf course have a food truck?
Well, they can, but is it gonna be permanently stored there, or is it?
Right. The best thing for the golf course, really, would be to get a food truck, because they're not gonna use their kitchen, so if they had a food truck up there, they'd be better off, cause at least they could serve something.
So do we want it in the recreational district and the pud, because if you have a food truck, obviously, it's gonna be competing with these restaurants, number one.
Well, wait a minute, competition's a good thing, and food trucks are, food trucks are a very good way for someone who wants to have a restaurant business to do it without having to write a half million dollar check.
Yeah.
But where are they gonna, are, are they going to be in a permanent location, are they going to be, like, Southern Pines has that.
The truck, Big Or.
Which is beautiful, and I get, people are there all the time, but they, they, we would have to designate, or would we be designating certain areas for these food trucks? Or would we just say, well, they can be anywhere? Or do they have to rent space from somebody else, you know?
In the recreational district business.
See, in the, in the, in the recreational district, it's up to the recreational facility to invite them in, right?
Okay, hold on. Let's say the general store decides to get a food truck, okay? That allows them to offer more variety, it's parked onsite, they also use that food truck potentially to rent out for events, not necessarily within the village, and they use it onsite. What's wrong with that?
No, I know, and I'm not saying, it's just, what, you know, how are we gonna control where they are, or do we care where they are?
Well, as long as they're in the district, they're authorized.
They're only in village business and they're only in recreational district. If somebody brings a food truck on their private property to host a party, that's a totally different, that's totally different. We're talking about somebody having a food truck as part of their business.
Right.
I think, I think VB and RD is perfectly appropriate.
I have it under pud. I have an A under pud. On mine.
Yeah, it is, it would be allowed under puds because if, if.
If they have a court, they set up a court for.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think we should call it food trucks, not mobile, no, mobile food service, cause I don't know.
Yeah, people know what food trucks are.
Right.
Well, how about we put food truck or mobile food service?
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't care, I, how you do it. Remember, these definitions came from.
Correct.
So what do you want, food trucks, mo- and food truck and mobile food service?
Mobile food service, yeah, whatever, yeah, that's fine. And then those three districts, okay. Okay, caterer. Do we want?
I've mixed.
Do we have?
It says including banquet halls.
Have you really one way or another about caterers?
Well, here's what we didn't like.
Well, a lot of restaurants do catering too.
Well, but it says including banquet halls.
Right.
Banquet halls is a different.
We can't support a banquet hall.
Well, and not only that, you wanna support a banquet hall? I mean, we didn't want an event venue in a pud, and, and a banquet hall is an event venue.
I just don't think it would be appropriate in, in the space that we have allowing.
I don't think it.
If we got rid of it, it would not prohibit uh, the, the golf course from getting a caterer to do a meal, right?
Oh, no, no, no.
This is catering business, right?
Or for the restaurant, just do catering. I mean, a lot of restaurants.
Yeah, I just, what we're saying is that we wouldn't have banquet halls, so we can just delete this.
Banquet halls. Yes.
Get rid of that one, alright.
Okay.
And these, they're out of both, both areas. Alright, now, now we go back to real estate. Okay, so make sure we're looking for real estate services.
I don't understand, I really don't understand this first. It says leased real estate except for buildings such as manufactured home sites and vacant lots includes real estate appraisers.
Leased.
We didn't really understand it either.
I, I don't.
I don't understand it either.
I don't like that definition. If you have a realtor, then that's a realtor's office, and that's fine. I don't really know what that definition is, I don't, I think we should just say re- realtor or whatever.
Just put real estate services, just put real estate services.
Right, and just get this definition out of here.
And just throw down all this other.
You wanna delete the definition?
I don't like that definition at all.
For me.
Yeah, it's confusing.
Out.
And a property management person?
Credit.
Nothing wrong with that.
Commercial property related mini self-storage.
No, totally no.
Oh.
Well?
No, where are we gonna, what if we put, what if someone comes in and says, I wanna put a mini storage right in the triangle?
Hold on just a second.
Can't say no.
Just hold on a second, but it is conditionally zoned, so, I mean, just hear me out for a second, a lot of people in the village could use a place to store stuff.
They can go to two eleven and store stuff, I just don't think.
They could, I'm, all I'm saying is that if you could conditionally zone it, I wouldn't, you might consider it.
But, again, if someone owns, correct me if I'm wrong, but if someone owns, and someone does own, all of our commercial property right now.
Someone does.
Right.
And if they say, I wanna put a self-storage right across the street from the general store, we cannot say no.
Correct.
That's correct.
We can't say no.
But if we take it out, they can apply for zoning.
Exactly.
So we should take it out.
That's what I say.
Yep.
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 Alright.
Out.
Uh, rebel house related leased buildings as well, I don't understand what that is.
I don't know how that's different from real estate, I think we should take this out because it's no different than, it's a real estate agent.
Yep.
Basically.
So I think we should just.
Wait a minute, do you have to be a real estate agent to rent a property?
Sure.
Uh, no.
No.
You don't.
You can't, you don't have to be, but people do.
You have to own.
And remember, this is also talking about renting tangible goods, this isn't just talking about.
No, I'm talking about the one ahead of it.
Rental housing related.
How is that different from property management services? Manage real property, okay, that's managing, but if you're managing, you're
Leased building.
Got it, got it, got it.
Probably, I think we should get that out.
Yep.
There's no need to define what a real estate agent is gonna do every day.
Okay.
Rental leasing tangible consumer goods.
I think definitely not.
Definitely not.
And the list shrinks.
And we'll, that's what we.
And even car rentals, I don't think we should have that either.
No.
No, no, that's.
No.
Which ones that?
Cars.
Cars, no, no, uh, car lease.
No.
Uh, renting skis.
Ski rental, absolutely.
You know what, recreational, recreational goods rental though, I, I mean, that's not, if somebody rents bikes, I mean, stuff, that's not the worst thing on the planet.
No, I know, but sailboats, motorcycles, um, they can put it on one of the plows.
Snow skis.
No, they'd want it on the golf course.
I just don't know, I, I, I just don't think.
Do we really need it?
I, I don't think we want it.
I don't think we do either.
And again, if someone comes up with a great idea, they can always apply for it.
Yep.
Take it out.
Uh, consumer goods rental.
No.
Out.
No.
Intellectual property rental, I don't know.
Sure.
I don't know what that is.
I don't know how you manage that.
I don't know how that's different from a computer store. I would get rid of it.
I don't know what they're, what they're saying actually.
I would, you would delete that one. Go back to consumer goods rental for just a second. If someone came in and as part of their hardware store or whatever, they had, um, consumer goods rental like, uh, steam cleaners, carpet cleaners.
But that's a service they offer within their store, it's, it's just like a real estate agent, we're not gonna tell them, you can, you can buy, you can sell, you can, you know, write contracts.
Okay.
This to me says it's a separate.
And that would, you could do that in the hardware store just like you do now.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, we're getting there.
Okay, um, professional services, legal services.
Yes.
Accounting.
Sure.
Yep.
Architectural engineering.
Yep.
Yep.
Graphics, design.
Yep.
Consulting services.
Wait a minute, I gotta turn the page.
Scientific research development.
I don't know, you, I, you might kick that one to the curb.
Yeah, I'm thinking, when I saw that, I was like, okay, wait a minute, we're talking about monkeys and beagles.
Yeah.
What's that mean?
Scientific research.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not really a business that benefits the residents of the village.
Take it out.
Advertising.
I mean, I would.
Advertising, public relations.
Well, these are just professionals that might have an office.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Operating firm.
Gotta have a vet.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Better services, yeah.
That would be nice.
Office administrative services.
I have no on that, but it doesn't matter.
I don't see that's no big deal.
Yeah.
It's like, yeah.
We're leaving it or taking it out?
Facility support.
Well, that's almost like an employment, these are like employment agency type things.
Yeah.
Provide operating staff.
For support services within appliance facilities, janitorial.
I don't, yeah, that'd be an issue.
I don't, I mean, I, I don't either, I mean, we're just, we're, we're talking about people businesses.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. Employment agency, nothing wrong with that.
Employment agency. It's an agency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Copy center.
Copy center, ruling and copy center.
I don't know, the copy center thing kind of is weird, I, I don't know.
I don't think we need that.
What's that?
I think that's kind of antiquated, quite frankly.
Yeah, I would take it out.
The copy center?
Yeah.
Travel.
Sure, if they, if they exist.
Why not?
You want it, does it hurt? Investigated, investigation security services.
Definitely.
Yeah, that's fine.
You want it?
Yeah, I would say that it's, uh, it's a good advice.
Okay, extermination and pest controls.
I don't know why not, I mean.
Janitorial.
The only thing with something like extermination and pest controls.
Storage and chemicals.
Well, it's that, and it's also, they typically have a lot of vehicles and trucks and all of that.
Yeah.
You got, you got one up, up, I'll stand there.
So I'm, in our commercial, right now, our commercial, as far as I understand, we don't really have rules and regulations about, you gotta keep your cars parked, you know, in a place that's, you know, kind of not everybody's space.
Wanna just say no?
I think so.
I think so.
I'm good.
Janitorial.
Wait a minute, I lost my spot, okay, no extermination.
I guess that, was that like molly maid or something?
Let me ask, hey, let me, wait a minute, let me ask you a question, would you leave extermination and pest control, um, under conditionally zoned? Or are you just taking it out completely?
Nah, just take it out.
Take it out.
You can always go for it later.
Okay.
Same thing with janitorial, I mean, how is that different from?
Janitorial, is that like a maid service or something? Cleaning service?
Yeah.
You know what, maybe we should change it to cleaning service.
How is that different from facility support services?
Uh, because if it's someone who does private residences, that's totally different.
But it says including janitorial.
Well, we can did, we can, would you say, change it to?
Residential cleaning service.
Residential cleaning service.
Yeah, but how is that really a little different?
Well, I'm with, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm with janitor, I mean, it's, it's, it specifically calls it out in facility support service,
Do we really need to get?
If you.
It says janitorial, including janitorial.
I would delete janitorial.
Oh, oh.
Okay, landscapers, we want a landscaper.
You know, I don't think so, because landscapers can be a lot of equipment.
Very messy.
Lot of equipment and a lot of chemicals.
Right.
Yep.
I would say no to landscaping.
Okay.
Well, we got Kennedy.
Yeah, I was just gonna say we have him.
That makes, that makes, that makes his business a grandfather, but I mean, that's a little, um.
A boar's nest.
That's a, that one I'm not so sure of, I mean, if you had a good landscaper in the village, probably have less traffic in the village because you wouldn't have so many one-offs doing it.
But there again, center of town, um, at least.
Well, if you go down this way, it's not center of town, really.
But that's. But I'm just saying, it could be center of town.
Well, it's a business district, that's what we, that's what it is.
And because there is one that's grandfathered, that's great, but if there's gonna be another one, it needs to be applied for.
And I think it'd be better court, better controlled.
Well, just be a little careful because, and that makes Kennedy's business a non-conforming use.
Yes.
Right, by me.
And there are, well, but, but then there are different rules that go along with what he can and can't do, yeah.
Kennedy can't do, and what's the problem?
And I'm not an expert on this, I'm just gonna tell you, you'll make it a non-conforming use.
Uh, then I think, I still don't think we want landscapers in the center of, of Foxfire. I don't know, do you guys agree or disagree?
I agree, I agree, I agree.
And we'll deal with whatever's grandfather, but just because it's there doesn't mean we have to keep doing it.
No, I, no, you're right, all I'm saying is you're now making his business a non-conforming use, just be aware of that. And you could also have, I mean, if you're gonna have a, um, like, like a small hardware, whatever, you know, they can do landscaping services.
Is that, uh?
Right, the lawn, the lawn garden.
Is that property, Kennedy's property, is that? Is this district?
Uh, hang on a second, I'll tell you.
Or is it recreational?
I can forgive me is. What is he, where is he?
He doesn't own it.
He doesn't own it?
No.
No, he's VBD.
He has a, does it district?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, what, tell me what a non-conforming, tell, explain that please.
Well, it's, it's a use that's grandfathered.
I got that.
But now it's not conforming to the allowable uses.
Doesn't change anything though, I mean, his grandfather is still, I mean, there's no change to him.
It doesn't, but what it means is if he ever decides to leave, then what happens?
Then you, it, it changes.
Then you can't.
Then you wouldn't be able to do it, so, so just be, all I'm saying is be careful because now you might be limiting his ability, now, he doesn't own the property.
He doesn't own the property, that's the whole thing right now.
No, he doesn't.
All I'm saying is you just be a little careful about.
Well, he's good as long as he's there.
So, that's what I'm saying, why would we?
He's good as long as he's there.
Right.
But if he gets out that, that usage goes, yeah.
Then that property is not.
Right.
Then it's a benefit.
And again, do you want that property in the center of town?
No, I, I don't, I don't like it there now, I mean, it's a nice store now.
What is that now?
That's why I think that.
Well, the biggest problem with that, and he was explaining it to me the other day, is that was part of the airstrip.
Yes, and it's contaminated as well.
Right, that's the ground.
Actually, yeah, it was part of the golf course.
Well, yeah, but the, the ground itself underneath is contaminated.
Right.
So, it's gonna be very limited as to who wants to go in there in the first place.
I agree.
So.
But I still think that we don't want landscaping in the center of town.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, you're really, because we don't necessarily want somebody coming back there and doing that again.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Carpet cleaning, carpet and upholstery cleaning.
I don't think so, not separately, did I miss something?
Okay, it's part of the.
Yeah.
Okay, personal care.
Your hardware store's getting awful big.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but it's, but they are for the most part now. Personal care.
I don't know how that's different from a, no.
Well, that'd be a beauty shop.
I think we should say, personal care, barber or beauty shop, put it all in one.
Okay.
Or, or, I guess we could keep both, we could keep both.
Well, women, there's, I, I, I mean, there are a lot of, there are a lot of little nail salons, that's all they do is nails, you got beauty shops, that's all they do.
Sure, keep both.
Okay, we're good with that, alright. Uh.
I think that next one is weird, I don't know.
To marry. Which one?
Nutrition, diet, and weight reduction.
Wait, where's for? Gary has a question.
Oh, I was, I was letting you ask then.
No, I just think that's a, I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a business, but.
Which one are you talking about, Gina?
Nutrition, diet, and weight.
I'm gonna shade, yeah.
And you had a question, didn't you?
Well, I did, but it just.
I don't know what that is.
But it applies to all these, so, in my brain, when I was looking at that and I, I looked, of course, they're, they're pud, they're au- they're authorized pud. And, and I wrote in the, on the margin here, are we talking about this would be a strip center? Where we have a nail, we have a.
Not necessarily.
It could be.
It could be standalone.
Yeah, they could be standalones, they could be part of a well-done.
Okay.
Strip with different purses.
I'm kinda thinking that if one person owns all the property, th- their plan is to build buildings that have multiple office spaces.
Yeah, I'm true of all.
Is what I'm.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to Doc Runner and just say, hey, listen.
I do wanna talk to him too.
Yeah, you, let's, you and I, I'll set it up, we'll just say, listen, we're going through this, because Doc Runner's done, I mean, he did Cotswold, I mean, he is, he's done some nice stuff.
We need to talk to him, yeah. Yes, you have.
Yeah.
But he hasn't done anything here.
Not yet.
I, well, I, you know, I've been here for, I've been here for not very long.
Yes, it's a very small population.
From the, from the time I got here, I've been totally, he's gonna develop something.
He's usually cutting.
Well, he told me down the road.
I've got some notes if you wanna read them.
Okay, alright. Well, it always, sounds good, kinda like, kinda like the general store, but nothing really, uh, materialized.
Doc Runner, Doc Runner's a really good guy.
Not in.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
No, he did say eventually.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, alright, um, I don't know, the nutrition diet, weight reduction, what?
I don't know.
Why we even, do we really have to?
Yeah, can we take that out?
We could, we could take it out.
I don't know what that is, I don't know what that is.
Right? Think, think of a strip center, and then put a little diet store in one of those little.
It's more of a consultative ki- it would be a consulting, a professional service kinda thing.
A professional, alright. Okay. Tanning salon?
Wait a minute, is that yes or no?
Yeah, leave it there. A tanning salon?
I think like a thing of the past.
No.
I would say no, but.
I don't, no, no.
No.
But I don't know.
Can I ask a question really quick, when we're deleting all these, is your intention also to delete them out of a pud?
No, I mean, pud's, um.
Yeah, 'cause I, I, you know, again, I keep, I keep looking at the strip center.
If I, if you, if you don't want them, I would put them in a pud.
I keep looking at the strip center. What?
I mean, if you don't want that use in a, in a, in a VB, then why would you allow it in a pud if you don't want the use?
I just don't, personally, I, I don't know, I don't think tanning salons add anything to the.
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying in general, when you're going through now and you're saying delete this, are we including the deletion in the pud?
It would make sense to do that, I'm trying to think of one, why it wouldn't, but your initial thought is it makes sense to do.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm just asking, so we, so we don't get in a situation where you deleted all these uses but left them in pud,
So they, they align otherwise. Yeah.
And then somebody comes and picks every single use you didn't want to put it on the pud.
Okay, so we're gonna, so we're gonna take out tanning salon.
Yep.
Ear piercings?
No.
What's wrong with ear piercing?
That's weird. Why wouldn't?
You gonna get one, Doc?
No. I'd get it, I'd gotten.
Gary's got it.
And then they say other personal.
I don't have any little personal care services.
You know.
Ooh, ooh.
That's not below.
I'm not sure exactly what that means, and.
Means.
Wait, wait, where are you, the massage?
No, electrolysis, ear piercing, and other personal, why is that not part of, um, beauty shop kinda thing, you know?
I mean, other, other personal care services.
I mean, do, do places only, well, I shouldn't even ask that question, um.
They do ear piercing in the tattoo parlors too, so I just wanna let you know that.
I just think that's a, it's not as, I don't think it's a business we really want in our town when we have such limited space.
Right.
I think they'll apply for it later if they want it.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Okay, so we're taking out the, uh.
You're right, it's, it's kinda similar to tattoos.
Well, please leave the massage therapist, okay?
Yeah.
No, I think that's a, that's fine.
You wanna massage, you wanna massage parlor here?
No.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not a parlor, a therapist.
Massage therapists are very, people they thrive here.
Do we wanna do massage um slash physical therapy, kind of?
Yeah, no, because physical therapy is totally different. Physical therapy is gonna be more like right next to a doc's office, that's a different.
Professional service.
I mean, just 'cause, I can't imagine that, I, I guess you could, physical.
Did I see?
Well, I, I've been in places where they had a physical therapy in, in, no, and, no, just a physical therapy in.
Yeah, well, there's tons of them.
Yeah, so. So, we leaving it?
I'd leave, I would leave massage here.
Okay, all right. Uh, tattoo parlor.
No.
I would say no.
No.
It doesn't add much to the value. Uh, animal services.
I, I.
Grooming and training, this is kinda touchy.
The only thing that I wanna say on that is, is that if we even allowed training, I can see grooming.
Grooming I can see.
Yep.
Training and I would say grooming, no boarding.
No boarding, no training.
So I would say.
So you can't have a kennel? Cause we have an issue with somebody doing training in the yard.
Right.
Well, that's a whole business, that was, that's a whole business.
But it, but it still, this would be a business.
Yep.
And so, we, we gotta stop him from that because he was.
Right.
I'm just going, grooming, not including training or boarding.
Right.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. I, I just wanna throw, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just one thing to throw out there. A lot of these small places offer like puppy kindergarten classes for people that.
You're either training or not training.
Nope.
Right.
I mean, that, that would be my thing, having had dogs, I wouldn't have difference between training and puppies, same.
Yeah, I agree. No, cause groomers don't necessarily train.
No, no.
They're, they're grooming.
Nope. Okay, sightseeing.
The only thing with that again is the vehicles.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think, I think we should delete sightseeing, we don't have sightseeing.
Right.
So just delete it.
This is a golf course.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, look out your window.
No more sightseeing.
Taxis and limousines.
Taxi and limo services.
I say no.
No.
Towing.
No, no. Well, if there's a gas station, he might have a tow truck.
Post office.
Okay.
But then it's part of the gas station.
If it's just a gas.
Other than that, no.
Not a, tow, towing service.
Post office. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, okay, if you have a problem with vehicles, then you should have a problem with the post office.
Well.
No, post, I'm just talking about a, like, the post office, the Jackson, well, you're right, Jackson Springs isn't really a distribution post office, it's a.
West End is.
West End.
But West End is, yeah.
West End is, but not.
Yeah.
They're, they're not gonna bring a post office here.
Well, then let's get it out of here.
Yeah, take it out.
Delete it.
Wanna take it out?
It's not gonna happen anyway.
Software publisher?
What, why is that?
I personally would take that out if it's animated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you.
All right, go on.
Just goes on purpose.
Okay, special purpose recreation.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, theater, dance, or music establishment.
I said, I said everything except for that.
Okay, let's get a little, get some little, uh.
I'm okay with, if they just say no, I'm okay with that too.
Okay.
Um, companies, groups, or theaters that produce theatrical presentations, dance, dinner theaters, live music.
If we're not gonna have banquet halls, I ditch that.
Well, I, I don't know, other than a small, a small theater, I don't know how any of that.
Small cavalry or something.
But small theater, now you're talking about parking, I mean, you're talking about all the things out.
Right, exactly. I think we should take it out, take it out.
Get rid of the museum. Get rid of the museum.
Museum.
Oh, which one, wait, wait, whoa, 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 what's that?
Museum, I don't know.
I think a museum would be, I wouldn't object to that.
Well, they say that we have a long or something.
They got cars, they got a parking lot. Same, same issue, you got a parking lot, you gotta have cars.
I just don't think a museum.
A small museum.
There's, I, I've seen small museums where you have a little parking lot, and, well, it's up to you guys, I don't care. Gary's okay with it.
Anybody have any others?
Well, I guess.
Okay, let's say this, let's say you had a small museum and they had Indian artifacts, or something like that. I mean, you can limit the amount of parking. You're not gonna have like, you know, a museum of national history or something like that, cause we don't have a lot.
Yeah, you can leave, like, yeah, you can leave museum.
Probably wanna do that.
Leaving it, okay, leaving it. Uh, games, arcades.
I'd say no to that.
Oh, oh.
Say goodnight.
Okay, we got the.
Miniature golf, I don't have a problem with in the, in the, in the recreational.
Well, actually, let me say something, you could do a miniature golf course on a couple acres.
Oh, yeah.
So I wouldn't have a problem with it in the village business district either.
Nah, I'd rather see it in.
Yeah, but it's, it's a very viable, it's a very viable business and it does not take a lot of acreage.
Well, and it could always be part of a restaurant, I mean, they could always have, or a, a, a little.
Oh, yeah, we didn't, we didn't really have, we didn't have a problem with a miniature or disc golf in V B.
Uh, disc golf I would, but miniature golf.
We leave that in the R D and you wanna put it?
In the business?
In the, okay?
With it without disc?
I'd rather, you know, I'd rather, well, you guys okay with it in business district?
Yeah, I think.
It's a business.
I actually had a, an aunt and uncle who had a restaurant and a miniature golf course.
I've seen them too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about disc golf though, I, I, I don't know, I'm not a.
Disc golf doesn't take that much acreage either, I don't know.
No, I know, but how do you guys feel about disc golf?
We don't even say anything.
Well, can I say something? Hang on a second.
It's light around you.
Hang on a second. Oh, where am I? Whichever way um the property is down Foxfire Road, that V B D stuff on the corner, when that was delineated for wetlands, it got hammered, I mean hammered, that whole area. So something that does not have um a lot of density to it, you know, that's open, stuff like that, may actually work in that property, because they might not have a lot of other options.
I don't know, I'm.
You're talking about Sacramento property off of the?
Yeah. Part of that's, part of that's V B, part of that's V B.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
When they delineated that for wetlands, I talked to Lydia Conard, who represents Sacramento, and she said it was very disappointing.
And they had big plans for that.
No, I, I, I'm sure they'll do something, but it changes the nature of the game if you gotta hunt wetlands. I would for sure leave miniature golf.
All right, I'll, I'll, I guess miniature golf's okay, I'm not so sure about this.
I'll take out the disc part myself, just go miniature.
What's the difference?
I don't even.
Well.
Well, give, disc golf, you're throwing the frisbee into the chain things, you know?
You can do it on, you can do it on as little as two acres, I mean, it's not, it's not some huge, it's not some huge thing.
Well, we take it out, they could always ask to put it back in.
Yeah, I, I, my, my only comment there is that if you think about a miniature golf, which of course we can see they're putting one out there by the Harris Teeter, they, they clear the land, they put in a miniature, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of those, but I'm just bringing that up as a point of reference for the disc golf, of which you don't mess with the environment, the golf course is actually put within the, 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 the property, you don't, you don't take down all the trees, it literally works within the.
But, you know, as I think about this.
There's nothing that says we're gonna let them clear cut anything if they go to do something like that.
As I think about this.
Put, put course.
Miniature golf courses, all the ones that I've been around, all are lighted at night.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And, and I don't know whether we want that.
No, we don't want that. Well, then get it out.
Well, wait a minute, whoa, 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 wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. You can do it on as little as half an acre, that's a small property. What you can do, you conditionally zone it, you could put a miniature golf course on as little as half an acre. Okay, so if you do that and you can di, okay, well, so make it an acre, I mean, double it. If you do that and you conditionally zone it, so that it has, and you can't use the lights after such and such a time, I mean, that's a very viable business. And that would be a viable business for people who have kids in the village, who want something to do and stuff like that. All I'm saying is, we can, just make it a conditional zoning.
We would have to put a conditional use on it. Yep.
And you, you are very specific about the lighting, I mean, you can have downward focused lighting, you can, you can regulate when it can be on. This, I would hate to see us throw this out.
Well, they, we would have thrown out the framework down there for lighting, they said that it was going to be a real problem.
And they redid it all.
And that, and, right, I'm just saying, and they said, you know, everybody got upset about the lighting.
Cause even if it is downward, it still does.
Well, right, oh, yeah, but right, you're in the village business district, you're not in a residential area. So if you have lighting in the village business district, that'd be like telling the general store they can't have outdoor lighting, that just doesn't make sense.
Well, actually.
Can we vote on that? Or do we just put, how do we put it with conditional? How do we do that?
It's, it's already, it'll be, remember I said when we started that conditional zoning now needs to apply to every district? So where we don't have it, and we already have it in there as proposed conditional, so if somebody brought that to you, you'd say, sure, we'll consider that as a conditional zoning.
So we put it in a PUD only, is what you're saying?
I, well, you can put it in a PUD, but I would put it in conditional zoning, because if someone just came in and wanted to do the miniature golf course.
Oh.
You write it as a conditional zoning, an R D conditional zoning, and then you work with the property owner to develop all the conditions for that development, so. I mean, that's, I don't, I don't see that as a bad thing.
So what we say is it's allowed in, what you're saying, what you're proposing is it's allowed in village business, big, village business.
No.
Recreational and PUD.
And a PUD and proposed conditional.
Condition, conditional.
And in all of those cases, it's conditional, in all of them, or in addition to?
Yes.
Right.
No, 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 no. What happens is when the person presents it, right, and maybe planning and zoning says, hey, look, this had, this idea has merit, but we need to be, we need it to be conditionally zoned.
So we can't say it's allowed anywhere?
Why not?
Because, well, if we're saying it's allowed, it's allowed unconditionally.
No, it's not, conditional zoning is an overlay district for every single zoning district we have.
You have it in, today, in this, the least one I have, is, it's in R D and.
Correct.
Okay, and we add it, we're adding it, it's to, we were talking about adding it in V B, having it in a PUD, and propose conditional.
Yeah.
Because remember, conditional zoning, it's not, it's not checked off in the sheet that you have, cause we weren't that far down the path in planning and zoning to writing the conditional zoning ordinance. Now that we've done some research on it, every, everywhere we read says conditional zoning should be applied to every zoning district.
I'm good in R D and PUD, but not with V B, that's just my vote.
You know, I, I, I agree with you, Gary, I, I just, I, I, I see both sides of it, where it, it could be beneficial to like a, a restaurant or something, but.
Yeah.
That's a, that's, that's if they want to do that, you know, I mean, it is, it is a, kind of an old business plan to have, you know, restaurant and miniature golf, but um, this, this conditional zoning, so you're saying that you're adding a conditional zoning.
District.
District.
Yes.
And then.
You just don't have it yet.
And it's everywhere?
It overlays every single district. And what it does is it gives the council the ability to do a legislative hearing, a public hearing, having worked with the property owner to develop all the conditions related to the development of the property. It's different, it, it kinda, conditional zoning kinda takes the place of a special use permit, which is a quasi judicial hearing. It's a one-time shot, the council can't table it and pick it up again, and in a special use here, in a quasi judicial hearing, only stakeholders get to stand up and say something.
So, so the fact that, let me just apply this to, um, I don't know, something we just went through. A massage therapist, right? We say it's allowed in village business. But how does conditional zoning apply to that?
It doesn't necessarily, all I'm saying is that everything I've read says you, you make it, let's say, I.
So, so you're saying that although we're allowing, although we're saying this table is, gives us the, this table is basically the, um, what we can and cannot have in all of our zoning districts, unless some, someone pulls the conditional zoning card?
No. No, the conditional zoning card, it, let me give you an example, recreational district is extremely difficult to zone, because every recreational use is different, okay? So conditional zoning on something like a disc golf course or a miniature golf course is a perfect example of how to use conditional zoning, because you can regulate things like the lighting, you can regulate things like the parking, you can regulate things like the, the cutting before you put the, before you put the course in place and stuff like that.
When do you pull the card?
When they come to you and wanna do it.
For what though? For anything? If it's?
Yeah, it, what I'm saying is, it, conditional zoning, it should be an overlay district in every district, because it gives the council more control.
Do you guys understand?
Yeah, every item on here, everything goes through a conditional.
When you pull it, I mean, you know?
You could make.
Every item on here.
Okay, let me hear, here's another really good example. Had we had conditional zoning, when Wendy Ridge came in, I would've said, make it RS forty conditional. Because Winston Pines, you know, right off of Linden, that was done as a conditional RS thirty zoning by Pinehurst. So, I mean, that's where you can, it, it's a, it's a flexible, it's a very flexible use. Hornick was all over that.
You're, this, this, when we talked about this right at the beginning, where I pointed out the fact that this says table six, that six point one lists those that are allowed by right, within those, there's no conditional with that.
Wait, 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 allow, allow, wait a minute, allowed by right doesn't mean that we can't set conditions. You, if something's allowed by right, that doesn't mean you come in and say, I'm gonna, it's allowed by right, so I'm gonna build a fifty foot water slide. That, it doesn't say that. It's, the use is allowed by right, but that doesn't mean that it can't have conditions imposed on it.
And there's something in our legal documents or in our ordinances that says that, or are you saying you're gonna add that?
Well, planning and zoning should finish it off in February, it's a conditional zoning ordinance. It's a conditional zoning district.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm still not a mini golf guy, but I'll go with whatever the council votes.
What I think, and I think Mary just was very clear, recreational use, to me, miniature golf is a recreational activity, and it should be confined to recreational.
That's what I would do.
That's, that's my opinion, that's my opinion. I, I don't, I don't necessarily think it belongs in the business district, but, that's my opinion.
I, I also.
But do we wanna to vote on it? I mean, we, council maybe is divided on that.
Well, it's gonna come up in a public hearing anyway.
Right, but I think at least we know where we're, we're standing.
Okay, so we're, so we're saying no to the.
Unless we wanna vote on it.
What, that's why I wanna hear.
I, I, I.
No.
You seven, um.
I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I'm no, as in, R D, yes, PUD, yes, I'm saying no V B.
Yeah, but not, I, yeah.
Yeah, no V B.
I say. I'm with, I agree.
All right, so that's, that's the majority, so there'd be no.
Not in business district. It can be, it can be in recreational.
Yes, all right. And then, okay, let's move on to the golf courses.
Fine.
I don't think there's any issue with that. Uh, get down to the last section there. Fitness, recreation, sports gym, athletic club, including archery and shooting ranges, horseback ballparks.
We thought we let you down.
Fitness clubs, we take out archery and shooting ranges, I mean, just by the, the sheer.
Unless it was indoor, but I still don't think we should, I, I think, yes, you're right, we should have, we shouldn't have archery and shooting ranges in business district, for sure.
Yeah.
Horseback riding.
Horseback riding.
Now, recreational district, I can see, I can see the um, horseback riding.
Right.
Ballparks, courts, fitness clubs.
Already have, yeah.
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 I can see a fitness club in V B.
Oh, I can see fit, fitness club in V B, no, I can, it's just that the horseback riding and the ballparks and the courts should be in recreational.
Yeah.
Right.
Do we wanna put that in the PUD also?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Probably if, there shouldn't be any objection, I wouldn't think, to having a fitness center in V B.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
So.
Okay.
Hold on.
So, so wait a minute, so we're saying in the business district, we can have gym?
I would sure hope so.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So that needs to be, how would we work that? Because we're gonna have to probably create a separate line for that?
Right.
Right.
All right.
Cause so the fitness center can be in business, recreational, or PUD, and then all these other things should just be in the recreation and the PUD.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna create a separate category for fitness clubs.
We're gonna take out archery and.
What's wrong with taking out archery?
Well, archery, I think.
If you're in recreational district, what's wrong with that?
I think arch, archery in recreational is fine.
You think so?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're, are we?
Where would we put that?
Probably inside.
Where would we put a?
Wait a minute, recreational district? We're not saying it's gonna be in village business district, we're saying it's in recreational district.
And, but where, where is, right now, in our, in our, in our recreational district, where would you put an archery?
Well, I'd ask that same question, but where would you put a golf course?
Yeah, that's true.
No, no room, no room.
Well, I mean.
We already have it there.
But, no, wait a minute, if somebody else wanted to come in and do miniature golf, I mean, you'd ask the same question, where are you gonna put it? So someone's gonna have to come in and propose it.
Knocking a hole around is a little bit different than shooting a, an arrow or a crossbow, uh, which can go a long way and do a lot of damage.
What, what way to quit? Which you're not out there doing it willy-nilly, I mean.
You're in a range.
What are we saying?
You're in a, a archery range with, which is bermed, and I don't know if you've ever been to an archery range.
Oh, yeah, I have, yes, I have.
But they're, they're, and they've gotta protect, it's just like a shooting range, you've gotta have, you know, berms and.
Do we want a shooting range in the village?
No, not a shooting range, but archery, but archery is quiet, there's no noise.
No, no, no.
Yeah, ar, but shooting range, no, we can't do it in the village, we already say that in our.
Right, right. Now, do we, do we wanna say R A for?
No.
The horseback riding and the, and the um recreational sports?
Well, I'd be really careful about that. When we had all the landowners here, we pretty much got the feeling that they want that to be open space, rural.
Okay.
Not open space, recreational, because.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, okay.
Well, let's just drop it, they could always apply for it later.
Am I right?
I think.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanna be sure you were back there.
Yeah.
No, I, I think that's, that like.
So, with that, we're bringing that up, we're going to leave in archery and we're taking out shooting range.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll create a separate category for fitness clubs.
Yep.
I mean, unless you're all opposed to archery, I don't know, I'm not, but.
I'm not, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, community health, community service and health.
Preschool.
Nursery, preschool.
We, let me say something about that. We took out elementary school, we thought if somebody had a nursery, like, um, you know, and you could put nursery, nursery preschool, child daycare, I mean, that's a pretty innocu, innocuous use.
Yeah. Fire and rescue, I don't know why we would need that.
Well, we already have it.
We already have it.
Yeah, I don't know why that.
Well, it's because it's, it's there.
Well, do we have to have it? I mean, do we have to do it there because we already have it?
Well, no, but you have to make it allowable use, don't start pulling things out just because we have them.
No, we don't leave it.
That's what I mean, I mean, we have to leave it because we already have it.
Yeah, we got, we got police and, already got a police station. Okay, emergency response.
I don't know, unless they're talking about an ambulance service, I don't know why this is in here.
That's what I thought, you know what, I thought it was an ambulance, that's what I interpreted that.
Well, then we should put ambulance service.
I would just say no.
Or, are we saying no to emergency?
By ground or air transportation.
Right, we can't do air transportation.
Service, I'm assuming that this is.
But we already have an ambulance service with our fire department.
Right, most of ours would come from the fire department or for fun, for.
All right, so delete this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we take that off?
Yep.
Just deleted it.
Yep, gone. Ambulatory outpatient care.
That's like a doctor's office.
Yeah, but then they should say doctor's office.
Well, wait a minute, no, wait a minute, I mean, outpatient care services, that can be a lot of different stuff, that's where you could have massage therapy, you could have.
Well, that's like a health spa.
No, 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 uh-uh, no, I mean, they have massage therapists, they have rehab people, I mean, those are outpatient services, and that has value to the village. I don't know that anyone would ever do it, but that has value to the village.
Is that, you know, outpatient service, you couldn't have surgery, come home that day, that becomes outpatient service. So we want that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Clinic and health spas.
I'm okay with that.
Do we want that in R D as well? Especially the health spa?
No, this is different. This is physicians' offices, dentists, chiropractors, this is leading toward medical.
Okay.
I think we need that.
Uh, diagnostic or medical lab?
Not here.
Why not?
Well, definitely.
Be part of the clinic and probably be part of the clinic.
Yeah, they, I mean.
Anything, anything better than that, I like.
Well, hold on a second. If you have, if you have, say, for example, a standalone MRI facility, that's a, I mean, they have one of those things in Southern Pines, and they are, I mean, they provide a very valuable service.
I think the dialysis is.
I wouldn't close all that stuff off.
All right.
All right, but leave it in.
Okay, um, get that, uh, child daycare.
Child daycare, you know, you almost could take nursery preschool out if you read this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I did online, that's what I.
So I'll delete nursery preschool, and we'll leave, whoops, and we'll leave childcare as it's written?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Community food service.
I, I don't think so. And that's just my opinion.
No, I'm, I'm with you, Jimmy.
I don't know.
I agree.
Don't need to.
No, I don't think so, that's usually a, kind of sides of something else.
And I don't think emergency and relief services, that we prepare to do that either.
Agreed.
So I think we should take that out.
Okay, I agree.
Small institution.
I think we should get that out, I don't even know what that is.
I don't know what that is either.
Well, I'm, I was gonna say, do we wanna put that in PUD? These, these two kinda catch all down.
What are they?
Well, it's, so, it's up to two hundred fifty seats, uh, in a larger setting, seating area.
Movie theater?
I, I just don't.
I mean, that's what comes to mind.
That's why I think it's too vague and we should, cause anybody could say, well, I fit into this, and I think we should take it out. Cause we don't know what it is.
I, I mean, cause someone could say, I have a small movie theater I wanna bring in, it's.
Well, and that, we can then approach that as a small, you know, do we wanna bring in a movie theater?
Right.
It's in a separate thing, but I don't think we should leave small institutions in.
And there's no. An institution is not necessarily a business.
Right, I should, I.
That's what I can't figure out.
We should delete this.
Both of them.
They're talking a, okay, get rid of both of them.
And we should delete the other institution too.
Yeah.
Whatever that is.
Okay.
Uh, construction, general contracting.
No.
I think this is an office?
Yes.
Just, just, I'm gonna be clear here, this looks like it's just an office, is that true?
That's what I saw.
But it doesn't say office, correct, and it should, because you don't want a general contractor.
Well, we could put office, we could put office there. Office up here on the, on the description.
I mean, that's.
They can build it all over. Put it right there.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, just make that office right there.
Office, no equipment.
Office right where?
Machine reading.
Where are you, building on the top one, where are you?
Building, developing, and general contracting office. I don't know what the machine reading.
I, I'm gonna take it out.
Put a question mark, take that out.
But I think we should take that out.
Okay. Carpentry floor.
Okay, wait a minute, stop for a second, so we're taking it out, it's, the only place that was allowable is the PUD, and you don't want it there.
I have it allowed in.
I don't have it allowed anywhere.
Yeah, sorry, so we're taking it out of both, that's my question.
Yeah, I don't have anything on both.
He's got it on, but either, oh, in.
I have it deleted, I would like to see it deleted.
Maybe.
Well, yours is the same.
Well, yeah, now, yeah.
And again, I think these carpet, all these contractor things, it needs to be, it's your office, it's not your working storage.
Yeah.
Well, that doesn't make sense though, I mean, then you may as well take them all out, because an electric contractor is not gonna have a separate office from the stuff he uses, that's not gonna happen.
I don't think these belong in our business district.
Yeah.
I really don't, I don't think it's gonna.
Painting, painting and wall covering? You wouldn't let somebody that has a plumbing business in the V B?
Depends how much equipment they have.
I don't know how you.
You know, that's the thing, are they gonna keep the equipment all enclosed and, like our neighbor, like our residents have to do?
Well, you can make that a condition of development.
They'd have to be fenced.
Not even, no, I'm not talking even about fenced, I'm talking about inside a building, so that people aren't looking at trucks and cranes.
That's what I mean, trucks, all that has to be concealed some way somehow. Pretty hard to do.
Yeah, it is hard to do, that's why.
Let me, let me, okay, so.
It belongs in an industrial area, not in a village business district, that's my opinion.
Okay, here's, here's how planning is only looked at it, we saw this as probably a lot of, um, S-type businesses, you know, an S corp?
Yep.
They're small, I mean, they may have one or two employees, um, you know, something like that, where somebody just wants to hang a shingle up and say that they do painting and wall covering, I mean, I, I don't, I just, you can strip them, but, I mean, if a contractor wants to do something like that in village business, if he has a couple of employees, he's restricted it, he's restricted from doing it as a home business, and yet those people, I mean, they could provide a very valuable service to the village.
But we have professional, we have professional services category. Um, I'm not too sure why we have it under construction and general contracting, but we have.
Involves adding, or having all your equipment.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I thought, too, why would, why, if we have it, that service is already available, they wanna put it in, under professional services. As opposed.
Well, I would say that it's necess, I guess it's kind of a professional service, but, but when we talk about construction and general contracting, um, I guess, like I said, when P and Z looked at it, we didn't have a problem with small contractors having a small store, you know, with a, with a shingle on it, and if they need, you know, equipment and stuff like that, we, we just garage it, I mean, put, just have stuff that's not out in the open, or have it landscaped, or have it, you know, screened or something.
I just think it belongs in an industrial area.
Yeah, I agree.
We don't have an industrial zoning.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, and I'm assuming we don't want an industrial zoning.
No.
No.
No. Alright.
Because every time I look at all of these, I think of equipment, trucks.
Even painters, I mean.
Sure, yeah, they got their painting truck.
We got one or two trucks out here.
And some are neater than others.
Yep.
That's just, you know.
If they wanna put one in, they can come and apply for it.
I agree.
Yeah, and then we can put the restrictions on at that time, at that time.
So, we're gonna basically.
This whole thing is gone, except for the office.
Almost everything out of there, except the office.
Okay, then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna move that up into professional services somehow.
On the, on the, on the first one we had there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, alright.
Okay.
Excellent.
Agriculture.
Agriculture.
Outdoor.
Okay, so.
Yep.
What is that?
Outdoor crop production.
I have zero, oh.
So, remember, these are, this one is on the, uh, three miles out there, yeah.
R A.
Yeah.
So, what is considered outdoor crop production?
Hay. Corn.
Farm.
Okay.
Farming.
Yeah.
Okay.
Farming, basically.
Okay.
Okay.
Greenhouse production in the business district.
No, it's not in the business district.
Mine is.
Mine is.
Oh, mine is too, yes.
We were, we were kinda not opposed to that.
Hmm.
I mean, you guys, you gotta let something in the village business district.
Well, we are.
I mean, if you do greenhouse and you allow people to, um, have sales of greenhouse products, I mean, I don't, we didn't think that was a bad deal, I mean.
Greenhouse production.
What's that, well, you really, what you're talking about, Mary, is really greenhouse sales of products grown on premises.
Yeah, we got like four, four different.
Well, there's, there's.
Oh, you got another line.
Four lines.
So, I think greenhouse production shouldn't be in the, either we should delete it, or we should.
Don't delete it, because I think you need to allow it, if you don't.
Up in the other, up in the other.
It should be allowed in your other ones.
Yeah, up to the other.
Out of business.
Well, take it out of business, out of, yeah, the village business, now greenhouse production, why wouldn't we allow that in, um, R E, R F, and E U?
See, now, mine has it in R A, R A five, well, okay, um, we did put it in E U because that's primarily, I'm gonna be sure we don't violate what's already in there.
But I can have a greenhouse in E U.
Can you do greenhouse production, I'm looking up what that word, well, how they define production.
How that's defined.
Does that mean like selling?
Yeah.
No, it's, no, it's not selling, it's producing.
Produce, production.
Cause what else do you do in a greenhouse other than?
Produce.
Well, but I'm thinking you produce for a commercial sale, if we go down to the next one.
That's how I read it.
So, go down to the next one, it says greenhouse, no on-premise sales, so this gives us the ability to be able to put in a greenhouse, right? Or them being.
See, should we delete greenhouse production and, and we have those other two categories?
Let me find out what, let me find out what it really means.
Cause you have greenhouse, no on-premises sales.
And then it says sales of products.
Right, sale of products.
Premises, so it's contradictory there.
Well, it's two different types.
Two different categories.
Which is fine, cause I might want a greenhouse.
How do you, how do you figure?
I don't know.
Cause no on-sale premises means that I can have greenhouse, produce whatever I want, I just can't sell out of it. I can bring my stuff somewhere to sell.
Okay, I see, thank you.
In greenhouse production, we left it in R A and R A five, cause they can be bona fide.
Well, how, what's the difference between greenhouse, no on-sale premises, and greenhouse sales of products, grown on premises?
No idea.
So.
Why would we have?
I'm thinking we just give it original production.
One of them.
Cause it's covered under the other two.
Right, drop one.
Why would we want a greenhouse with no on-sale, on-site sale?
Well, like in E U or R E, you might want that, because, because you wanna grow your own stuff and maybe take it to a farmer's market, or, you know.
No on-prem.
You just can't sell it on your promis, on, on your premises, cause you, you don't, you can't conduct a business where your greenhouse is.
So, we should, why not be be that too?
Why even have that, if, if, if sales of stuff you produce, you're taking it away to sell it, no, this is what you're selling off, off your premises, this is, you're doing the same thing, you just can't sell it on your premises, what, why do that?
Why do what?
So you could take out greenhouse production, is that what you wanna do?
I think taking it, I, I don't know why it's different than the other two.
I can't find the definition of it either.
Well.
Then, let's take it out.
That whole thing is gone, alright.
Let's let me take it out.
And that's production?
Greenhouse production.
Production, gone.
Production, greenhouse production is gone.
Right.
Greenhouse, no on-sale premises shouldn't be in the business, I wouldn't think.
No, not in village business, get that off of the village business.
If they're not selling it there.
But you can have it in R A, R A five, R E, R F two hundred, and E U.
Alright.
We're just eliminating, uh, business on the first one.
Correct.
Correct.
And then, sales of products on the premises. We have village business, R A, R A five.
R E.
Can they have commercial on R E?
Well, you can have a portion of it, I'd have to go back there and actually look, I don't, um.
I don't.
I don't think I know a second.
Cause E U, um, I'm not, well, I know.
You guys, I was gonna.
But I'm on, I'm on a different, but I don't know in E U in general, if you, I guess you can run a business out of E U. I mean, you can run a horse business for sure on E U, I don't know about a greenhouse business. But.
Well, I guess if we put it in six dash, six point one, then it's okay.
Right, I'm just, I just didn't know if R E, I guess R E, you can, you can run a business if you're, I guess.
R A.
I don't know, I don't, I don't, R E is. I guess that, that would be my question on R E. Is can they run a business out of R E?
Well, I know. Probably applicable to.
I know in residential, in R E, we've limited crop production to like forty percent of the property, and I'm looking for it, um, in E U, which is not quite as fast in the U D O as I was in the old stuff.
E U, well, I know what I can do, I don't know what.
I'm gonna have to check that one, let's keep moving and I can come back, so what, we're, so we on, okay, are we on, that's greenhouse, sales of products grown on pre, grown on premises, right?
That's the one we're questioning.
Well, here's, okay, here's the thing, if it's not allowable, okay, if it's not allowable in R E, we're saying we're gonna make it allowable in R E. So, we would have, we'd have to change the U D O.
But, but do, I guess the question is, is do we want to do that?
That's up to you guys.
Personally, I.
I, I mean, there's six, there's six acres, I mean, that's your minimum lot size is six acres. And, and.
I, I don't have a problem with it.
When we, when we did rural estate, we designed it as kind of a gentleman's farm, and we left it reasonably wide open so that the landowner could do what they wanted to do on a rural basis.
And I think E U is kind of in that same, and R F two hundred, they're kinda in that same boat, because E U is typically larger parcels.
They are.
Right.
Um, and again, I can't conduct a business out of it, but that doesn't mean that.
Yeah, there's somebody else who's in, who's in a question, for example, on Woodland Circle, we have a huge piece of equestrian, let's say Donnie Lee came in and said, hey, um, you know, I wanna have a greenhouse, I mean, I, why would we object? I don't, I don't see why we would object to that. Or if he wants to have a greenhouse as part of a, as part of a horse farm.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either.
Okay.
Fine, that's.
You're right, I'll check the U D O to see if we have to put it in there.
Alright, so we're passing on through now greenhouse sales of products and related accessory products.
I think if, if we're, I think if we're allowing a greenhouse sales of products grown on premises, I know this is related accessory products, um.
Yeah, I don't know what accessory product.
So, if somebody has greenhouse, you're gonna let them out, sell fertilizer, mulch, pots, stuff like that, I would let somebody do that in V B.
Yeah.
So, we have right now, nothing.
Uh, I've got V B.
V B.
Yeah, I've got V B.
I have V B.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, skip down a line, yeah.
Crop support should be deleted, cause there's no, we don't, crop support function, that's empty, so that should be deleted, if it's not already.
Yeah.
Cause it's not allowed anywhere.
It's not allowed anywhere.
There's not on anything, so, on, on mine.
And it probably shouldn't, includes dusting, spraying, and fertilizing.
That out, yeah.
Well, it's on my list.
It's on the list still.
Yeah, well, I don't.
It just shows you how many times planning is only had to revise it, it's gone.
Okay, it's gone from yours?
Yeah, it's gone.
Yeah, I don't have it, cattle ranches.
Cattle ranch, R A, uh.
Cattle and dairy, love it.
Okay.
I don't know about dairy, can, really dairy?
Okay.
Yeah, I love it.
We're gonna put R F two hundred, cattle ranch?
No.
Uh, no, I'm just gonna do that.
Actually, even in R E.
Well, but it depends upon the size of the property, I mean, they, they could have thousands of stuff, I mean, they could, yeah, they could still do that.
The zoning, they have to meet the zoning for the number of animals.
I don't know how many acres, I don't know how many you could need for cattle ranch.
Um, R A five.
Yeah, minimum lot size is R A five.
True, so if they only have five acres, they, I don't know, can they even have cows?
Yes. That's fewer acres than the R F two hundred.
One or two.
It goes, it goes according to the, you gotta have three acres for the first one.
I thought it was six, to have one.
For, for horses.
I thought cows were the same.
Well, they're allowable in R A five, but if there's an additional acreage requirement.
They have to have the.
They have to have the acreage, yeah, yeah.
Alright, okay.
We skip chickens, just kidding.
Nope.
Next up.
You had it go there, didn't you?
No, we have chickens in, um, R A.
Yeah, it's, it's mine, huh?
We've got chickens in.
Canine.
I got dairy cattle next, like, can we stay there, please?
Oh.
I thought we.
I thought we went through that.
Okay, we said that was okay, R A, R A five, R E.
Well, if you're letting cattle, dairy cattle is not, it's dairy.
Same, well, no, chickens.
I know, what's more.
I'm, I agree with, with chickens.
We got, we have them in all the larger lot, just like it says.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sheep goats, same.
All the way up to there.
Sheep goats are not allowed in.
We did not put it in E U though, and I don't know, I gotta check and see.
Not in the EU for sheep and goats.
Well, E U is, is equestrian, right, I mean, it's.
But does that mean you can't have chickens?
No.
No, no, it says I don't have chickens.
Okay.
I thought we were on sheep and goats.
Yeah.
I don't think sheep, I don't think sheep and goats will be allowed in equestrian.
No, they're not.
Okay, alright.
No brainer, it's allowed on R A, R A five, R E.
No, when you say fish. Now, when you say fish.
RF two hundred.
Must be a pond.
If you wanna have a fishing pond, like a production pond for fish, you could do it in RA, you, RA and RA five, yes.
Okay.
Okay, no, okay, but not residential.
No.
No, 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 not residential.
Not residential.
Other animals.
I think all other animals we should get rid of.
Well, let me ask you a question. What if somebody has alpacas?
Or, cause that opens up a lot of can of.
You're gonna tell them I can't have them, lamas, stuff like that?
I think, I think we should approach those as people have them.
Well, that puts an awful lot of onus on the, on the person who wants to have alpacas to come to the council for a public hearing.
Well, what if someone has pigs?
They're not allowed, they're not allowed by statute.
What if somebody has buffalo?
What do we care?
Well, I don't know, do we?
I don't.
I don't.
I don't.
But when we say all other animals, I think we have to be.
Um, you, like, let me look at something really.
Lions, tiger.
No, I mean, you're talking all kinds of things. I mean, you're talking alligators, bull constrictors, all of this kind of crap.
Right. Yeah. I just think. I just think they're crap.
Well, but what we, but you can, you can, you can limit, um, definition of livestock.
Yeah, there is a definition of it.
But that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, do livestock.
Livestock, okay, wait a minute.
There's a clear definition of livestock.
Yeah.
All other livestock animals.
This is from, let's see, definition of livestock, cattle, elk, reindeer, bison, horses, deer, sheep, goat, swine, poultry, llamas, alpacas, live fish, crawfish, and other animals that are part of a foundation herd, including dairy-producing cattle or offspring. So you could put other livestock animals in there, couldn't you?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except, excepting, with the exception of swine.
And there was a livestock animal.
Even if it is, you know, allowed or disallowed.
Pigs.
Do you guys have pigs?
Yeah.
Yeah. You can't have a, you can't have a hog farm, but somebody who's on a bona fide farm could have pigs, and I don't think we can prohibit that.
I don't think I'd want to.
You can't have a hog farm.
Limited numbers. They could have one, two, or three, whatever their acreage.
Yeah, but what is the number? Where is that determined?
How do you, how do you determine that?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I mean, you could have fifty hogs, and, and call it a farm.
Well. No, you gotta go to the state statute and see what defines a hog farm.
That's what I'm telling you, I have to limit the state statute. I don't know what to limit, before it becomes a hog farm.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, then we should say, uh, livestock excluding or um or hog farm as, as in general statute, blah, 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 whatever that is.
Yeah.
Prohibiting.
Numbers. I mean, because the way this reads, somebody could come back and go, doesn't tell me how many I can and can't have.
Okay, so, where it says all animals, are we putting other livestock animals?
Livestock, yeah.
Yeah. And instead of saying all, I would just say.
I put other.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, so we got that, we're good on that. Bees.
Okay, now, wait a minute. Other livestock animals, we're just saying in RA and RA five, right?
Correct.
Okay, got it, alright, alright.
Correct.
I'm okay with bees.
Bees.
These are good.
Do we wanna, do we, and this is just a question, do we wanna allow bees in RS forty?
We have a beekeeping option, um, don't we, I think?
Thought we did, I thought we dealt with this somewhere.
I know there is a beekeeping um thing here.
Yeah, Article two, let's see, let's see.
Yeah.
I don't have it on, four.
Bees?
They can say.
Right after all other animals.
Yeah, I got that, but I don't have it, did you see on RS forty?
I'm asking, should we have, can, should we, because I'm just asking.
Well.
Because bees.
That's forty thousand square feet.
That's an acre.
So, we, we have a pretty extensive section on beekeeping, so section three dash seventeen, Mary, goes in, is what it starts.
There's a lot of rules.
If somebody, if somebody follows all the rules, I don't have a problem having it in RS.
Do we want it to?
It's pretty extensive. Three seventeen, three eighteen.
Especially forty, maybe not twenty and thirty.
Three nineteen, oh, yeah, flyway barriers, there's a lot of.
Restrictions?
Restrictions.
What is it, twenty-one what? Three?
Uh, it's twenty, no, I'm sorry, section three dash seventeen, under Article two. I mean, it specifically has its own article. Article two is uh beekeeping.
Yeah, we had this discussion.
Yeah, it's pretty extensive, it really goes into a lot of detail.
I thought so, too.
Alright, so what was the question?
Did we wanna allow it in forty, RS forty? And, you know, I'm just thinking, um.
I tell you, apply all of the restrictions.
I don't.
I don't have any problem with it.
Well, wait a minute, it's not allowable, wait a minute, it's not allowable on RS forty right now, right?
I have it in forty now, I do.
Right.
I have it in forty now.
It is.
Let me, let me just bring this up. I mean, it's one thing, I think, to have them on larger property, but somebody who was gonna do this in a residential district needs to get permitted for it, needs to get inspected for it, all that kinda stuff. That's an additional burden on the village clerk. I would take it, I would leave it out of RS forty, and if somebody wants to do it in RS forty, just like you've done with some other uses, they can come and ask that we change the table of allowable uses.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
I love it.
So we get where we are, okay. No changes. Horses, pretty clear, looks like.
Horses.
Fur bearing, we took, I, I was probably delete that.
Yeah, there's nothing there.
Uh, can we go back to horses? Do we want, I'm sorry, do we wanna do um RD and PUD on horses?
No, because this is the stabling of horses. This is not the use of horses for business. That would be my take.
Okay. Fur bearing, we should delete it.
Boarding and animal breeding.
Yeah.
Animal support function.
Forestry and logging.
And animal breeding.
I don't know what, why we'd have that in business district.
It's not.
It's not.
No, it's not. I've got an RA, RA five.
RE and EU. RE and EU.
Okay, my, my forestry is in the business district.
So do I.
I don't.
We just, okay, but wait, wait, are you done with animal support?
We're, we're.
Wait.
No, I have a question.
No, a little support.
Okay, I thought you jumped ahead.
Oh.
Says.
We already did that, I thought we did that.
It says animal breeding.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
RF two hundred?
Well, if you have horses and you wanted to breed horses, why not?
It's not in, but it's not, it's not in RF two hundred.
It's not in there.
Oh, that's a good point.
And then.
You got a ten acre minimum, so I mean, I would think that would probably be okay.
RF two hundred?
And then, my other question is, animal breeding, are you talking about dog breeding as well?
No.
Okay.
No, uh-uh.
Okay, just checking.
Um, I wonder, I would not.
Do we wanna say include, includes horse boarding and breeding?
No.
Just put the horse breeding.
And then, it just says animal breeding.
Take out animal?
Well, no, cause what if you wanna breed, breed sheep or, or cows, whatever.
Yeah, go to certain like that, yeah.
Same thing.
Okay.
We pretty much define dogs under domestic pets. If you go and read the animal ordinance, dogs and cats are pretty much defined as domestic pets.
Right, okay.
Alright, so are we finished with that one?
Let's go.
Yes.
Okay, forestry and logging.
Okay, let me say something about this one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.